The Royal Commission is now in session.
Good morning, everybody. I shall ask Commissioner Mason to perform the acknowledgement to country.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge the First Nations people as the original inhabitants of the lands on which this hearing is sitting. Ngara ngaa, chukuru, rungu, kalyani, anangu, guari pa, jarra, ninanja, churra, mura, nganganga. We recognise Meijin, Brisbane. Nanana, ngor kanta, na ni, mura, meijanya, grismanta. We recognise the country, north and south, the Brisbane River, as the home for Cherubu and Jaguar nations. Nanana, mura, kanta, na ni, karu, panya, Brisbane river nya. Alanjarra, mono, oparira, anangu, ngorareja, churra, ninanja, mono guari. Nina ni, cherubu nga, mono jaguru na. And we pay respect to the Gadigal people of the Eora nation. Their land is where the city of Sydney is now located. We pay deep respects to all elders, past, present and future, and especially elders, parents and young people with disability. I would now like to read a content warning. This hearing will include evidence that may bring about different responses for people. It will include accounts of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of First Nations parents with disability and their experiences with children with child protection systems across Australia. First Nations viewers, please note that the evidence will describe removal and if the evidence raises concerns for you, please contact the National Counselling and Referral Service You can also contact Lifeline 131114, Beyond Blue on 1300 224 636, or your local Aboriginal medical services for social and emotional wellbeing support. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. Yes, Mr Crowley?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, the first witness we have this morning is Kate. She will be giving evidence by audiovisual link from New South Wales.
Thank you. Good morning, Kate. Would you be good enough, please, to follow the instructions of Commissioner Atkinson's associate, who will administer the affirmation to you? Thank you very much.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or aye. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Meijin.
That's not, I'm muted.
Oh, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for appearing today. Now, Mr Crowley will ask you some questions.
Okay, can you see and hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Kate, just before I start, you've made a statement for the Royal Commission?
Yes.
That's a statement, a 12-page statement of 23 November 2020?
Yes.
And are the contents of that statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
Chair, the statement is in tender bundle part A, volume one, at tab 23. I tend to the statement and ask that it be admitted as exhibit 8.10.
Thank you. Yes, that can be done.
Now, there is some associated documents with the statement, which are also in part I of the tender bundle at tabs two to 22. They are the subject of a non-publication direction that was made on the 18th of November. I tend to that material and ask that it be exhibited as exhibits 8.1.1 to 8.1.21, please.
Yes, that too can be done.
Kate, I want to ask you some questions to start off with about yourself. You're a First Nations woman from New South Wales?
Yes.
And you identify as Aboriginal?
Yep.
And you are a mother of four children?
Yeah, that's correct.
Now, it's the case that you have the care of your youngest child, but your three other children were removed when they were young
Yep.
by the department?
Yeah, that's correct.
And that all, that all happened during times when you were either a teenager or in your early twenties?
Yep.
I want to ask you, Kate, about, about when and how you, you came to be aware that you had an intellectual disability. You've spoken about that in your statement. Could you tell us, please, when you first became aware or found out about that?
Um, I think it was... I think it was in my teens, but I'm not 100% sure.
Now, can you tell us where or who you spoke to about that when you were in your teens?
Um, I went to Red Bank House at Westmead and, um, they did statements and like, um, like assessments and stuff on me.
And through those assessments, were you told that there were various diagnoses made, including a mild intellectual disability, as well as ADHD, borderline asperges and autism?
Yes.
Could you tell us, Kate, when you were growing up, until you found out about these diagnoses? Did you feel any of those things that you later came to be aware of? Did you feel that they affected you or were issues for you when you were younger?
Um, yeah, especially in schooling.
And how was it, how was it an issue at school?
Um, just affecting my behaviour and learning.
I'll come to ask you some more about school, but just going back to when you were first born, you, you stayed for a time, you say in your statement, with your mum as a premature baby?
Yep, yep.
And then, not long after you got home, it was just you and your mum for a period of time. Dad wasn't there?
Um, yeah, I'd never met dad, except when I was 16 years of age.
And then you said in your statement that it was about when you were around two and a half years old that you were placed into foster care?
Yeah, that's correct.
And since that time, have you kept in contact with your, your biological mum?
Um, yeah, but the relationships are not too good.
Your foster mum, though?
It can be a love-hate relationship.
I see. But that's not the case with your foster mum, though?
No. I still got contact with her and basically call her mum because she was the one that raised me.
And you've described in your statement about how you, you became a ward of the state from when you were very young through until you were 18 years?
Yep.
And was it the case that for most of that time, you stayed with your mum, foster mum?
I stayed with her up until about 16.
Now, your foster mum, she's a, she's a respected auntie and member of the Aboriginal community?
Yeah, that's correct.
I want, if you could, to tell us a little bit about what it was like growing up in the house with your foster mum?
Um. It was all right, I guess. Very, very crowded with heaps of kids coming in and out. But I guess that's expected when you're a foster parent.
Yeah. Just tell us about the heaps of kids coming in and out. Were there other foster siblings there during the time when you were growing up, including your own? Brothers and sisters?
Yeah, there was, um, a few foster siblings and two of my biological siblings.
And because of that make-up of the house, you were able to grow up with a big Aboriginal family surrounding you until you were at least 16?
Yeah.
Now, I asked you earlier about your, your Aboriginal identity. Growing up in the house with your foster mum, it's the case that you always knew that you, you were Aboriginal?
Um, there was comments made when I was first put into care by my biological mother, saying that we weren't Aboriginal, so why would we be put in an Aboriginal placement? Um, and ever since me being in that placement, I've always identified as Aboriginal. And she still, to this day, says that my children aren't Aboriginal, but they're going to an Aboriginal school.
Now, you've also explained in your statement, though, that your mother herself identified as Aboriginal, even though she said some of those things?
Yeah, yep.
And it's the case, Kate, that for you, because you were removed from your mum's care when you were so young, you're still not sure which side of the family your Aboriginality comes from?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But nevertheless, you identify as Aboriginal and that's a proud part of who you are today?
Yep. Because I grew up in an Aboriginal family, I've always identified as Aboriginal and so have my children.
Yes. And you mentioned about school being a bit difficult earlier on, Kate. I want to ask you about that now, if you could tell us about what school was like for you?
Um, overwhelming.
Now, when you were in primary school, were you in the mainstream schools?
Um, I was in a mainstream primary school, um, up until, I think about year five or year six. And then I got changed public schools into a special needs school. But while I was at the, um, mainstream school, I was also in and out of the support unit at that school.
And you said earlier that it was a bit difficult for you. Learning was difficult?
Yeah, learning, um, and basically, um, keeping focused, really. And the attachment between me and my foster parent, um, was a bit difficult and always, you know, it was a challenge to get into school and also get on the school bus because I had some stuff going on on the school bus.
When you say some stuff going on, you've, you've described that in your statement?
Yeah, um, I was sexually assaulted by another student at school.
Did that happen at primary school?
Uh, primary school all the way through into high school. Um, and when I, um, brought it up with people, they didn't believe me. Um, until I spoke to, like, school councillors and then they brought it up.
And during this time, of course, you were still in that position as a ward of the state you described earlier?
Yeah.
Was that something that you spoke to your caseworkers about?
Um, no, my foster mum did, but they didn't, um, like, take it into consideration or anything like that. All they could do was ban me off the bus and get a support, like a support transport, where they come to my front door and pick me up and drop me, um, back home.
Now, Kate, after you finished your primary school and you went to high school, can you tell us about what year you got to in high school?
Um, well, I finished year 12, but I did year 12 from home. But I went up into, um, the start of year 11 because I was pregnant and the school told me not to, um, come back because they were worried that, um, something might happen. And then they gave me the choice of doing my year 12 certificate from home.
And you managed to complete that?
Yes.
And you're describing in your statement that that's one of your proudest achievements?
Yeah, it is because I, I wanted to show my children that, you know, I'd finished school and, you know, I want my, my kids to follow my steps of going through and finishing their HSC.
Now, your, your ex-partner, who became the father of your first child, you'd met him when you were a young teenager at a, at a camp?
Yeah.
And that was a camp for foster kids, a foster care camp?
Yes, that's correct. I think I was about 13 or 14.
And you sort of lost contact with him, but some years later, you then again met up and that's when the relationship commenced?
Yeah.
Now, you talked about, um, being pregnant with your, your first child at school. How old were you then, Kate?
Uh, 17.
And how were you doing at school up until that time in high school?
Um, it was still a struggle. I always had, um, like, behaviour issues. You know, running out of classrooms, running away from school because I always wanted to be at, um, like, I always wanted to be with my foster mum. So I would always run away and get on the train and go to her work and then the school would ring her and say that I've ran away from school and they would have the police looking for me and everything.
You said earlier, Kate, that you stayed with your foster mum until you were about 16?
Yeah.
Uh, but it was about 17 when you were pregnant with your first child?
Yeah.
Just tell us about what happened from in between, from moving out from your foster mum's place and where you went?
Um, well, first of all, I was in and out of refuges. And then, um, my caseworker got me a house through, um, a service, um, which is in Sydney. And they got me like a little unit, um, which was just a one-bedroom unit. I was there for about, I think, eight, nine months. And then that burnt down. Um, and my ex-partner was actually stuck in the house fire when the gas heater exploded.
Yeah, I, I'll come to ask you about that some more, Kate, in a minute. In that time, when you were living in that, that unit and you were pregnant and, and trying to cope with, with your school, how did you feel at that time about where you were at that point in your life?
Um, I felt alone because I didn't really have any, like, family to call on. And at the time, the, like, I was in the unit, um, I had lost contact with my, uh, foster mum. And basically, I was trying to get in contact with her to try and ask for help. Like, because I had no guidance of, like, cooking or, you know, washing clothes or anything. I was just used to my foster mum doing everything for me. And basically, I had to, um, learn myself, really. Um, and then, once I had, um, my first baby, I basically got back in contact with her through Facebook and told her.
You talked about your, your ex-partner, the father of your first child. Um, he also was the father of your second child that you later had?
Yeah.
Um, could you tell us what the relationship was like with, with your ex-partner?
Abusive.
He would abuse you?
Yeah. Very domestic, very violent.
How often would that happen, Kate?
Uh, every day.
Did you have anyone to go to?
No. There was heaps of AVOs and stuff in place as well and that still didn't stop him.
Did you ever leave?
No, because I was scared too.
How long did that relationship go on for, Kate?
Uh, eight, about eight years. Six, six or, yeah, six to eight years.
And is that how the relationship was through that whole time?
Yeah.
Well, I want to ask you some more now about when your, your first child was born. You talked a moment ago about, in the time when you were living in the unit, that there was a explosion there. Now, this, this happened when you were, um, late in your pregnancy with your first child?
Yeah.
Um, how, how far along were you?
Um, I was probably about 36 to 38 weeks.
Hey, you weren't there...
I was almost ready to have her.
Hey, Kate, I was just gonna ask you, you weren't there at the time when that happened, but your partner was home when the explosion happened?
Yeah, I was up the road doing grocery shopping. Came home and the whole street was covered in fire brigade, police, ambulance.
And the unit that you lived in, what happened to it?
Um, the gas heater exploded.
Now, at the time, was everything that you had in the unit at the time that the gas heater exploded?
Yep.
What happened with all those things?
They burnt.
One of the things that you, you say in your statement you were very sad about was that your high school certificate was destroyed in the fire?
Um, like, all my schooling stuff, like, all my reports, um, and certificates, my birth certificate, everything was in the house when it burnt down. And I basically got left with just the clothes on my back.
Now, your partner, he was injured quite seriously in that fire?
Yep.
And did he end up in hospital for a time?
I was in hospital for about, I think, six months, I think it was. It was, um, it was a long time. And he was down at Royal North Shore Hospital.
And what about you? What, what happened with you after the house had burned? Where did you go?
Uh, I went down to his, uh, foster mum's for a bit, um, while I was going in and out of the hospital.
And how much, how much later was it that you had your first child?
Hmm, I think about a month later? Yep.
Now, at the time that...
A month later.
At the time you had your baby, Kate, did you have a house or a home to live in?
No. I was living with friends.
Just, can you just tell us what happened then, when you did have the baby? You ended up having someone from the, the department, someone from docs, came to speak to you?
Um, yeah, they, um, rang me, well, like, the docs helpline rang me and said that I wasn't leaving the hospital with the baby. Um, big, until docs, um, would come in and speak to me. And then we had a meeting where there was like a safety plan put in place because I had all services involved, so they let me take the baby home. Um, and then six weeks later, they, um, got a report saying, um, that she had, um, golden stuff. And then they came in and told me that I had to take her to the hospital. And they came up to the hospital and basically said she was coming into care because I wouldn't look after her.
Now, at the time that you had your baby, were you still a ward of the state?
Yeah.
And we talked earlier about, um, your, your diagnosis of, uh, intellectual disability and some other conditions. Were those things that the, the department knew about?
Yeah, they were well aware of it.
During the time that you had your first baby, you spoke about services and things. Were there any specific services for, to help you with looking after the baby and looking after your, your mental health and your condition?
No. There was only, um, a service, um, that would come in. Um, they were called Healthy For Life and they would come in and basically weigh baby and check her and, um, make sure that I was doing everything right. But because I didn't have a steriliser, because I was always, um, like, told to do the sterilising of the bottles on the, the pot, um, because I didn't have a steriliser, they basically said, well, that wasn't good enough. You don't have bottles or anything out for her.
Now, after leaving the hospital with your baby during that, that time before they, they took her into care, where were you staying?
Um, out of friend's house.
And did you apply for public housing to see if you could... And did you apply for public housing to see if you could secure another place to stay?
Um, I was on the list for housing property. Uh, I didn't get, um, a house through them until, um she was about nine months old, ten months. And then in that time, um, like, she was taken off me and we, um like was doing supervised contact and stuff like that. I ended up getting put into a place called Charmaine Cliff cottages. Um, and basically they came and took, um like basically brought her with me to that place. And we had to, um, stay there, but halfway through me staying there, I got offered a property through housing. And I was worried about losing that house and going back onto the list. So I chose to leave Charmaine Cliff with my baby and live at the property that I got given, but then docs came in and said it wasn't good enough, that I had to stay for twelve months, and then I was able to leave. And then I said to them that I was worried about paying double rent and having no money to survive on. Cause at you had to pay rent as well as pay for your own food. Cause it was just like a little villa and you had someone watching you. But I felt that the department, when they put me in there, that they set me up to fail with my child.
Let me ask you about that, Kate. When you were staying in that villa in the combination there.
Yeah.
Were, were there supports and things like that being provided for you?
No, there was nothing. They basically put me in there, um told me I had to stay there for twelve months, then I could leave after twelve months. And they told me that while I was staying there, I would have had you know, mental health workers and everyone else come and see me. But I had nothing. I wasn't even allowed family members to come over and like have dinner or whatever with me. I had to sit in the villa with just me and my child by myself, with no communication. They took my phone off me and everything. And basically, I was just on my own. And when I, um, like in the mornings, when I was there, we would have to participate in a group for three hours. And like my child went to like a daycare where they, um, like look after the kids on the, like on the site of and all the mums that were there would have to participate in this group. And because I always had that trouble with learning and, you know, like sitting in big groups, I basically like went into really bad anxiety. And I basically ran out of there and said, I'm not doing it, I'm not doing it. And I even asked them if I could do the groups with just me and the person running the group. And that way I could just focus on what I was doing. And I explained to them of how I couldn't learn with other people around. That it was just like one-on-one. And they said, that's not an option. And then they had a meeting with docs and docs through the whole thing, they were going, yeah, you're doing everything right, you're doing everything right. There's no commi- like, there's no concerns whatsoever. And then a couple of days later, they came in and said, oh, your mental health's really bad, we're taking your child. And they would take her off me, then put her into a, like, emergency placement, then come back, put her back with me and then like basically play and pass the parcel with the poor kid.
Now, you, you spoke earlier, Kate, about when you moved, you made the decision to move out of that place into the housing that had been, um, found for you.
Yeah.
And it was around that time that the, the department uh, ended up taking your child back into care.
Yeah.
Um, when you moved out of the place you were at into the new house, did you know that that was gonna happen?
No.
You speak about, in your statement about um, the department telling you that you had broken the agreement that you had with them about staying for the twelve months at the other place.
Yeah, that's cause I was scared of with my, um, Department of Housing Property. Cause I was told that if you don't take one house, then you go right to the bottom of the list.
And did you explain that to the, to the department?
Yeah, and they said that they were gonna speak to cottages and see what we could do about doing half payments. So I wasn't left with no money. And I said, well, it's not an option because at the end of the day, if my stuff is in that house and nobody's there, my house would get broken into.
Okay, after, after that, you were in the new place, um you talk about in your statement that you and your ex-partner then fell pregnant with your second child.
Yep.
And that was at a time when there was still, um, some action going on with, with your first child, with the department wanting, um, orders to place.
There was also, um, court proceedings still going.
Yes. Now, when you fell pregnant with your second child, um, you got in, in contact with I D R S?
Yeah.
How did you get onto I D R S?
Uh, I can't remember.
When you did, um, make contact with them, how far along i- in the pregnancy with your second child were you?
I think I was early on.
And during this time, you're still with your, your ex-partner, still living together?
Yeah. But I also, I also came in contact with I D R S, um, when I gave birth to my son as well.
Yes. Well, I'll just keep asking at the moment about your second child for the moment, Kate. During that time, when you're still living with your partner, you speak about in this, in your statement about um, the department being involved in, and making you do urine tests.
Yeah.
Um, you just tell us what that was all about.
Um, well, they thought I was on drugs cause my ex-partner had a really bad drug history, um. And basically, they made both of us do urines. Um, there was even times where I was at contact and they would ring me going, you've got a urine in half an hour. And it's like, well, how am I meant to get from contact all the way there within the hour when contact finishes at ten thirty and I have a urine at eleven?
Now, you've also said though in your statement that, um, you never took drugs. You don't do drugs or, or even drink.
Not.
But you still have to do the tests.
Yeah. And if I missed one, then they classified that as dirty.
During that time, you also, the department asked you to do a, a parenting capacity assessment?
Yep.
And this happened at a time when you were, you were quite heavily pregnant?
Yeah, I fell into labour that day of having the, um, the parenting capacity assessment when my waters broke. And we didn't even finish the parenting capacity assessment.
Wha- what happened then?
Um, they basically stopped the parenting capacity assessment and I went into birping unit. And then got transferred to another hospital. And then the, the, like, I wasn't getting any contractions or anything. And then they basically took me upstairs of the hospital that I was at and, um, just waited. And then early hours in the morning was when I got rushed down to delivery room.
Now, during the time that you were in hospital with your second baby, you met Julia Wren?
Yeah.
Uh, she was a caseworker from I D R S?
Yes.
And during that time, did you know what her, what her role was, what she did?
Um, no, I actually was worried that she was a docs worker.
Uh, how long did it take for you to, to trust Julia?
Hmm, a while. I think it was like
I want to ask you then.
A couple of months.
Sorry, Kate. I want to ask you about, um, what happened then with your second baby. You, you were, um, in the hospital, you were able to take your baby home?
Um, he went into, um, a foster, like, um, not, it's, wasn't a foster placement, it was where his dad, with his dad's foster mother. Um, and basically I was travelling to and from for a bit until, um, we had a service come in and they were able to supervise at home. Um, they were working on restoration. But it didn't happen because, um, of all the abuse and stuff with my ex-partner.
Yeah, I want to ask you about that, Kate. You, you describe in your statement that you, you and your ex-partner, the relationship broke down. Um, and that was the end of things with, with him because of the abuse.
Yeah.
Um, after he was no longer with you, did you try and, and, um, have your baby with you at home to continue with that reunification?
No, because I didn't think that I would be able to have a chance. That the department wouldn't, um, let me. They did mention that I could have co-parented. But I wanted to co-parent with my foster mum, but they said that she was unwell um, and couldn't help me.
And did you explain to them that you couldn't co-parent with your, your ex-partner as well because you'd separated because of the abuse?
Yeah, um, I had also Julia talking to them as well. Um, to try and work out something, but they were, like, they were never negotiable with what's going on. And like, I was actually breastfeeding at the time as well. So, like, when he went back to where he was staying, I would have to express my breast milk during, during the day and then send it home with him. So he was still getting like the good milk and not formula. Cause I always said, like, I want to breastfeed my baby and I don't care how it is. But I'm, you know, not having formula.
Now, after your, your baby went to, into care, you continued to have that contact, travelling back and forth?
Yeah. And there was some nights where he was able to actually stay at my house, um, with a worker. He was allowed to stay overnight. And then, um, it dr- like went to that it could be unsupervised where I had him overnight. And then a worker would come in the morning and it would be like that for a while. And then, um, when the worker was doing their reports, they basically said that I was doing everything. And dad was just sitting there playing the Playstation, ignoring the child.
Now, I want to take you ahead now, Kate, to when you had your third, your third baby. You, you ended up having a, an emergency caesarean, you speak about in your statement with your third baby.
Yeah.
Um, can you tell us how old you were then?
Um, yeah, I was about twenty-one, I think. They were, yeah, it was four, no. So, yeah, I was about, I was about twenty-one.
Now, at the time you had your third baby, your, your first two children were still in, in care with the foster carers?
Yeah.
Um, when you had your third
At the time I gave birth to my third child, my first child was with my biological mother.
Now, you still had contact with each of your first two children, did you?
Um, the first one, no, not so much. Um, I missed out on a lot. The only communication I would have with her was, um, like when my biological mother would send me photos of her. Um, but other than that, I would see her at least once a month.
But more, more contact with your second child?
Yeah, more contact with my second child because he lived in the area. Um, and it was easier for me to get back and forth.
Now, when you had your third child, um, what was your plan of how you were going to look after the, after the baby? What were you gonna do?
I was gonna live with my foster mum and co-parent with her. But they didn't even give me that option. They basically came in and ripped him away from me. Um, at birth, like, the day after I had my caesarean. At that time, I couldn't even walk or, you know, get up and actually go and see him. So he was in nursery because they told, um, they told the hospital that they had to put him there. So they could come in and check him before I could even see him. They came and done their checks. They said everything was fine. And it took them two weeks to find a placement for him. And they still gave me the yellow paper to say he was coming into care the day, like, the day after he was born. And I'm sitting there and I was crying and I'm going, how can yous do this? Like, I've just had an emergency caesarean, like, I can't believe this. And like, I was so upset that that's what they were doing. And when they came in to take him, they didn't even have clothes for him. They had no formula for him, no nothing. And I said to them, I said, he is, you know, he's a travelling all the way, like, four hours away and yous aren't even gonna take formula or anything for him. And they said, oh, we'll stop on the way. But I found out that And they said, oh, we'll stop on the way. But I found out that when they took him there, that there was, they he was just taken in the clothes that he was taken from hospital in. And still in a nappy that was drenched.
Yeah, Kate, you you told us a moment earlier about with your second child, how you were able to still express and and um breastfeed and and give breast milk for your baby. Was that the case with your third child?
No.
Were you able to do that?
I was breastfeeding him up until the minute that they left the hospital. Um, and then when they took him from the hospital, they didn't supply anything for him. And then they came, then they came like two weeks later and told me that I have to fill out his birth certificate forms. And I said, well, what's the point in me doing it when I can't even, you know, see him or anything? And I put up a big fight for me to see him. It was to the point where I was seeing him four times a week. And they were paying for my train fare and everything because I wasn't driving at the time. And um they paid for my train fare, got up there. I went and seen him for three hours and then would travel all the way back home. Um, I did that for four times a week. Then it went down to two times a week. And then it went to once a month. And now it's um every six weeks.
Kate, was it explained to you the reason why you couldn't have your baby stay in your care?
No, they didn't tell me. They just said because one baby was removed, the others removed.
And was there any discussion about how you might be able to have the baby at home if you had other supports?
No. There was no discussion at all.
Yeah, earlier I asked you about Julia Wren and I D R S. Was Julia uh with you or in contact with you when you had your third baby?
She was in contact with me and on the phone um as a support person when they were um giving me the papers and stuff. And I also had my foster mother there as well.
Now, you mentioned earlier about a a plan of wanting to have co-parent with your foster mum.
Yeah.
Did you you suggested that to the department?
Yeah.
Um, but but that wasn't agreed?
Yeah, they said, like, they basically turned it away and said, no.
Now, I want to ask you now, Kate, about your your fourth child, your youngest child who was still with you.
Yeah.
Now, when you fell pregnant with your youngest child, you you were in a new relationship with your current partner?
Yeah.
And your current partner, um, he also has some some mental health issues and an intellectual disability.
Yeah, that's correct.
Um, but you you've described him as being um supportive of you and helps you with the things that you need to do.
Yeah.
Now, when you found out that you were you were pregnant with your fourth child, you speak of of contacting Julia Wren from I D R S uh early in your pregnancy.
Yeah, I was about seven weeks pregnant when I I I went into the office and we made the phone call to the docs helpline asking if we could get some assistance from um family and community services and they basically um got a caseworker involved um and I worked with them from the time that I basically told them that I was pregnant to what, yeah, till now.
Now, I want to ask you about going in to see Julia and contacting the department. You've spoken of in your statement about going to see her in the office and that she suggested ringing the department to tell them that you were pregnant.
Yeah.
How did you feel about, how did you feel at the time about doing that?
I was scared.
And what were you scared about?
About them taking the baby.
And what did you think might happen though if you didn't tell the department?
Um, they would have came and taken the baby.
Now, you 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 say in your statement that you spoke to Julia and she explained to you that she wasn't she wasn't suggesting you do this to try and dob you into the department, but um that she was trying to support you and help you so that you could keep your fourth child?
Yeah, yeah.
How long did it take to have that discussion for you to decide it was a good thing to call the department?
Basically straight away.
And then when you made the decision to do that, you mentioned earlier about calling the helpline, this is the docs helpline at the time.
Yeah.
And you speak of in your statement about um saying to the helpline operator that we're not ringing to make a report, we're ringing to reach out for help.
Yeah, that's correct.
Um, was that something that you had to to stress to them, that this was not a report about child being harmed or in danger, you wanted help?
Yeah.
And it was after making the phone call, sometime later, a prenatal caseworker from the department got in contact to help you out?
Yeah.
Just tell us about that if you could, Kate, what what was the caseworker able to do to help you during the time that you were pregnant, leading up to birth?
Um, they got an intensive family-based service involved. Um, basically had a um support worker come with me to all my antenatal appointments. Um, some I did on my own, some I had a support worker. Um, and basically they just kept in contact, making sure I was going to my antenatal appointments. And then when I had baby, um, they got the intensive family-based service to come in and actually stay. So it was a bit like what I had with my second child. But except for this service went on for twelve weeks. And it was intensive and they were there every day um up until about six weeks old. And then they um like cut down a bit. So it went from like, um, I think like three, three times a week. Um, and then they would um move down more and then cut down hours. So, um, like on a Friday, I would have the worker there. I've been like from nine thirty to about six. And then there would be a two-hour gap. And then another worker would come from for night times. And then that would just um they gradually went off. And then it was just one, once, like one day a week. And then it was a couple of hours at nighttime and then they would leave. So basically, it was a lifesaver for the intensive family-based service.
Now, that's the duelers that you talk about in your statement.
Yeah, that's correct.
And you even referred to them
Yeah.
Um, what were the sort of things they could do in providing that intensive service for you?
Um, they just did support really.
And they were in the home with you during that intensive period?
Yeah.
And if you could just describe for us, Kate, if you could, um, what difference did that make for you in being able to look after your fourth baby compared to, say, your second baby?
Oh, because they could write reports to fax about how I was parenting and that I had everything like, um, like supplied everything.
And how did it make you feel having them there to support you compared to when you had your other babies?
It was helpful, but then it was a bit useless really. Like, because I already knew what I was doing. But then it was helpful that they were there um explaining to fax that we could do it and like writing reports and that. Um, so it was like, it it wasn't like evidence-based, but it was basically so I could show them that I could parent.
Now, with your youngest baby, you were able to keep your baby with you and the department didn't take any action to remove the baby?
No, not at all.
What about after the the intensive service, when they'd finished, were you still provided with any other supports?
Um, no, not really. Um, we're basically, like, as soon as they left, um, there was no intervention at all, um. Or fax came out for a home visit to check everything and make sure we had everything. And then they closed the case.
Why do you think it was different with your fourth baby? As opposed to your second baby, your other babies?
Different partner and no violence. And that I actively worked with them.
And the prenatal worker that you had, how were they different to the other caseworkers you had before?
Well, the prenatal caseworker worked with me from, you know, basically day dot from having that phone call. Um, where the other ones, like, I had a prenatal caseworker call me with the third child, but um I basically didn't want to, um, it like negotiate with them or anything like that. I actually um took off from my home and like basically tried to hide so they wouldn't take my child. Because they were all promising me, we're not taking your baby, we're not taking your baby, you can have him. And then as soon as he was born, they basically said, no, we're we're taking him. So, um, it that it was different to when I had my third child.
If you'd had the the support that you had for your fourth child, the intensive service, do you think things would have been different with your other babies?
Uh, yeah.
And how do you think they would have been different?
Um, well, having the support in place, I guess. Um, could have, that could have helped with keeping them home.
I want to ask you, Kate, during the um times that you've spoken about, did the department provide you with any any cultural support?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what I'm asking, Kate, did they ever provide you with any cultural support or services through the department?
Um, no, they didn't.
Was that something that was discussed with with the department about your your Aboriginal heritage and that that was part of your children's as well?
No.
What about now with your children? Are they in contact with their their culture and their heritage?
Um, yeah, they do, um, like Aboriginal stuff. But they
Like what? Sorry, Kate, you go ahead. What's what sort of things?
Um, no, what I do, NADOC Day. Um, my daughter actually does the Welcome to Country assemblies. So, um, she does the um whole speech thing. Um, my two boys are actually learning how to play the didgeridoo. And my fourth child is actually currently doing um a lot of, um, Aboriginal stuff at school to like daycare. So they're doing paintings, they know um like where her mob is. Um, they do like the dream, the dreamtime stories. They kind of read stuff um of basically her Aboriginity. And they they also do, um, like uh like food testing. So basically, um, like during NADOC Day and that, they have like kangaroo and all that sort of stuff. Um, they bring that in, um, especially with um like the um all sorts of furs as well, like the kangaroo fur, uh wombat. And all them sort of things, um, they do that sort of stuff and my daughter really likes it.
Uh, Kate, you you talk about in your statement that you made contact with Aboriginal Mothers Group?
Yeah.
And has that been a help to you?
Um, yeah, it has. I've, um, I also go to an Aboriginal playgroup as well with my fourth child. Um, we go to an Aboriginal playgroup. Um, but sometimes because it's on a Monday, she goes to school. So um, I do it at least every second Monday where I take her out of school and then, um, let her sit with that.
Uh, you've also spoken about in your statement, Kate, about how you feel that your culture keeps keeps the kids safe.
Yeah.
Even if they're not in your care. Just explain about that, what you what you mean by that?
Um, basically just so they know how like um where their Aboriginity comes from. And also basically, um, like if if they're out in stuck in the bush, then it learns, like it teaches them of how to actually protect themselves if something bad happens.
Okay, I've just got a couple more questions for you. I I just wanted to ask you about a couple of things that you mentioned at the end of your statement. You say that um you would like to see some more consistency with the people you deal with at the department and about their attitudes towards um a First Nations parent with disability like yourself.
Yeah.
Can you just explain what you mean by that about the consistency and the approach and attitudes?
Well, they need to, um, you know, acknowledge the parents who have disabilities. Um, like they need to let them have a cha-chance of actually being able to parent their children and not just rip them away. Um, and also be able to let them show that they can actually be good parents and like put more supports in place really. Um, like, like the for example, like they were, they were great. Um, and I would recommend it to, you know, other parents who have disabilities to like if they have got any fax involvement or whatever, to actually get that um service in place because it's really, really good and um like for them to keep their children, it's important.
With your with your fourth With your, with your fourth child, Kate, do you feel like you were given a go to show that you could be a good parent?
Yeah, yep.
What about with your, your first three children?
No, I wasn't. I was, it was appalling of what they did.
And the, the thing that you say in your statement, the one thing that you would say is. Ask for the department to give parents in your situation a go, let them show that they can be parents.
Yep.
Yes, thank you, Kate. That's all the questions I have. Just wait there a moment, please.
Thank you, Kate, very much. I'll just ask other commissioners if they have any questions. Commissioners Mason and Atkinson are in Brisbane. I'll ask first Commissioner Mason if he has any questions he would like to.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Uh, Kate, thank you so much for coming and sharing with us. Uh, the experiences that you had, uh, as a young person and during those years of being a, being a mum. Uh, with your children, uh, really, we all really appreciate the time that you've taken in doing your statement as well as being today. Uh, I did have a question about, uh, that transition between being with your foster mum. And being in, um, in that home to transitioning out, um, of the home. Um, and just getting your thoughts about what facts, um, is that, is that what you would say, fax child protection?
Yeah.
What supports they could be doing to support, uh, someone like you in those circumstances? To prepare for life beyond being with your foster, uh, foster mum. Um, with, 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 uh, someone who has a disability, but also who is, is a First Nations person. What, what could be some of those, uh, supports that could be given to help prepare for that transition?
Well, I, I think to try and get a worker or somebody in place. Where they go into the home and actually teach them how to parent. Um. And basically like with living, living life skills. To try and teach them how to do that as well. Like if they, if they've grown up in a foster home like myself. Where everything was handed to you, everything was done for you. And that, you know, there was no need to, you know, do stuff on your own. Um, where you could have had a worker come in and say, hey, this is how you do this. Or, you know, meal preparations, this is what you need. This, you know, like, um. There's a lot of things that they could have done to help, but they didn't. They chose not to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkinson?
Uh, thank you.
And Commissioner McKeown?
Uh, no, thank you.
Kate, thank you very much for coming to give evidence. We know it's not an easy thing to do. We appreciate sharing, because you've shared your story with us and we thank you very much for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr Crowley, do we now take an adjournment?
Yes, Chair, if we could, please, for twenty minutes.
Yes, we'll, we'll adjourn for twenty minutes. Thank you again, Kate.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mr Crowley.
Chair, the next witnesses we have to give evidence are Kenneth Clift and Julia Wren. Uh, they are each giving their evidence via AVL as a panel together.
Yes, thank you. I think, uh, I'm just waiting for them to come on screen. Yes, I think we now have, uh, Mr Clift and Ms Wren. Thank you very much for coming to give evidence to the Royal Commission. Just so you are aware, Commissioners Mason and Atkinson are in the Brisbane Hearing Room. Commissioner McKeown and I are in Sydney. And Mr Crowley is in the Brisbane Hearing Room. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of Commissioner Atkinson's associate. She will administer the affirmations to you. Thank you.
I will read you both the affirmation. At the end, please both say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Mr Crowley will now ask you some questions.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, good morning, Mr Clift and Ms Wren. Could I ask first of all, please, if you could just. Um, each confirm for me that you've both provided a statement to the Royal Commission?
Yes.
Yes, that's true.
And the contents of those statements, are they true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
Uh, Chair, the, the statement of Mr Clift is in the tender bundle B at tab eleven. Uh, it asks that that be received, I tender it, and if it might be marked as exhibit eight point one one?
Yes, that can be done.
And the, the document which is next to the statement is at tab twelve. If that could be marked as exhibit eight point one one point one, please.
That also can be done.
And the statement of Ms Wren, if that would also be received, tend to the statement and if it could be exhibit eight point one two, please.
Yes, that will be, that will be exhibit eight, uh, twelve. Yes.
Now, could I start, please, with you, Ms Wren? Um, if you could just please tell us a bit about yourself, um, where you're, you're currently working and what your role is?
I work for IDRS, which stands for Intellectual Disability Rights Service. My role is a non-legal parent advocate. So, um, part of IDRS is Ability Rights Centre, which is the legal side of IDRS and I work in that centre. So, um, and as I explained to all the parents that I work with, that I'm not a lawyer.
And how long have you been in that advocate role?
Uh, close to six to seven years.
And in the, the, the role that you have, could you just give us a, a brief description about what it is that you do as an advocate?
As a non-legal advocate, I work with parents that have an intellectual disability. So that could be a mother or a father. I can't work with both due to legal reasons. Um, I work with the parents that have community services or child protection. Um, involved already or are potentially going to get involved or there is a risk of, um, child removals.
Yes, thank you. Now, Mr Clift, can I ask you, please, if you could tell us what your position is and what your role involves?
Yes, certainly. Um, I'm employed by IDRS as the care and protection solicitor in the Parents Programme.
And what do you do in that role?
Um, the role, uh, it's provision of advice and representation to parents with intellectual disabilities. Um, in, who are at risk of or involved with Department of Communities and Justice.
And how long have you been in that position?
Uh, it will be five years next February.
Now, can I ask each of you, um, you were each involved to greater or lesser extents with the case of Kate? Who was a client of the service?
Correct. I've been involved with her, um, when she had her second child. So, yes, I've been involved with her quite extensively. Um, she was actually my first parent that I ever worked with in this role.
And are you still involved with Kate?
Yes, very much. So, not because community services are involved. It's just, um, she's part of IDRS and we do keep in contact. And we've always, um, had a great relationship. And also when Ken works with her, I step in as well and, um, assist her in with what needs to be done.
And just in terms of, of Kate's continued involvement with IDRS. Um, there's an advisory group, Making Rights Real.
That's right.
And Kate's part of that group?
Yes, she is.
Just tell us about what that group does, please.
Um, they actually go to different parts of the, of IDRS. And explain to us how it is easier and better for us to interact with people with intellectual disability. Um, Kate goes to board meetings and talks to them about the, um, services that we have here. And she also has participated in other, um, things such as, uh, you know, surveys, research. And she's very much involved with IDRS on many different levels in that way.
And she even jokes about being your boss?
Yes. But I, I tell all the parents that I work with that they are my boss, but she actually is really my boss being at IDRS. Um, Making Rights Real Group, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, Mr Clift, um, you had some involvement in Kate's case too for a period of time. Um, you were involved when there was court proceedings in relation to her third child.
Um, yeah, look, I wasn't involved in representation in those proceedings, but I did assist Julia by supporting. Um, Kate through some of the, uh, some of the processes that she had to go through with DCJ.
Uh, I'm going to ask you about the, the model at IDRS where the, the lawyer and the advocate are working on a case together. But could I ask you, Mr Clift, if you could just tell us a bit more and explain a bit more about, um, IDRS? And what, what service it actually provides to clients?
Certainly, IDRS is a, is a fairly large organisation. So, um, we're a very large, um, disability advocacy and community legal organisation. Um, we also provide education to people with disabilities. Uh, and their supporters and other people working with them in how best to work with people with, um, disability. Um, my, you know, our, the legal team basically provides general legal services to people with intellectual disability throughout New South Wales. Uh, my role is more specialist role, just doing care and protection work.
Yeah, Ms Wren, if I can ask you then, if you could tell us a little bit more about the model. Where the, the advocate and the lawyer are working together in the child protection matters for clients?
The reason why it works really well, um, I don't work just with Ken, I work with a lot of different, um, lawyers. Uh, the, and I work with lawyers that I feel that, um, in my opinion, that they respect the parents that we work with. Because they are complex with intellectual disability. And the reason why it works is that whilst if it's, if it is in court, it is not, um, what. Lawyers can't speak to the caseworkers or casework managers. And the lawyers have to go through their lawyer and goes through it. So it's like a chain. I mean, it's one, you know, one person has to go through another person. So what we, um, so what is, what works is that I can speak to the caseworkers. The child protection workers and I have meetings and I can always report back to the lawyers. Um, one example is, you know, if there's a care plan meeting or a family action plan meeting. At least I can report back to the lawyers, say, this is what's happened, this is what's been said. And then we can talk together with the parents about plans and str-strategies with the affidavit so they can, um, write up.
And how important do you think it is for your clients to have someone performing that advocate role? Not just the lawyer acting for them, but the advocate in their dealings with the department?
I'll give you one si-one example with Kate. This happened with Kate. We were, we had a meeting with DCJ and, uh, they were talking about Kate being quite promiscuous. Having a number of children with a number of different, um, partners. And I said, well, hang on a minute, no, that's not true because with the first partner that she was with, she was with him for quite some years. And that was, and she said, oh, yes, it was six years I was with him. And they, they actually then said, we stand corrected. So if I wasn't there to, you know, to tell, tell them, hey, no, that's not right and to advocate on her behalf. Um, they would have just put it in the affidavit that she was some person that liked to be, um, promiscuous. Which, I mean, regardless, it's relevant or not, but still, you know, the truth has to be, um, upheld. So, and fair go. They need to have a fair go. So I think it is very important to have somebody, um, as a non-legal advocate for these parents. Because they can stand by and they can support the parent to speak for themselves, advocate for themselves if they don't want to. Then I'll speak for them. And it keeps, um, DCJ workers accountable. And, you know, they have to listen to what the parent has to say.
Ms Wren, could, I asked, Ms Wren, if you wouldn't mind speaking just a little more slowly because.
Sorry, yes, yes.
Transpite into Auslan and we need to have real time transport. So as I say to other witnesses, you're by no means the first to speak a little too fast. But if you could speak just a little more slowly, that would be great.
Apologies.
Now, Ms Wren, in your statement, you, you refer to the, the Parents Programme at IDRS. Um, that's the particular programme that you're engaged with?
Yes, correct.
And could you just explain about that, what the programme is and how it works?
Well, the programme consists of Ken and I. Um, and it works like with, there's a legal advocate and non-legal advocate. And I'm the person that, um, does the, the non-legal stuff. So, um, I do the casework stuff with the parents or case management with the parents. And the, and we also have part of the, um, website has information there about the Parents Programme that we work on. And that assists parents, that assists other advocates, family members. And, um, caseworkers as well, like DCJ caseworkers, if they want to go to that website. So we manage that as well.
Now, in, in terms of the, the clients that you, you have within the programme. Um, are you able to tell us how many are First Nations parents with, with, uh, intellectual disabilities? What sort of proportion?
I say it would be up to fifty percent at least.
Uh, and in, in total numbers, are you able to give us an idea at any given time?
Okay, um, right now I have eight parents that I'm working with. Five of them are First Nations.
And as for the, the client's circumstances. Um, is it the case that it's not just the, the intellectual disabilities that they may have? But there might be a whole range of other conditions as well, um, or other issues that they have?
Yes. I, I, I have a saying, they tick all three boxes. So they're First Nations, they're having intellectual disability and they're all kids in care themselves. And just seems like every single Aboriginal family that I have worked with or First Nations families I have worked with. Tick those three boxes, which is, um, which the intergenerational trauma is, you know, it's rough, absolutely rough.
When you say they tick those three boxes, what does that mean though from your point of view of if they have those features?
I've been told by DCJ workers in the past that because they're foster kids themselves, they don't know how to parent themselves. Because, um, their foster family weren't good enough to teach them. And that's not always true. And, um, so being, and having intellectual disability, they don't have any insight, they haven't learnt, they don't have the capacity. So, yeah, so ticking those three boxes, it's automatic removal almost.
Well, just on that question of capacity, uh, from IDRS's point of view. What, what's IDRS's view about whether those parents do have or can have capacity?
The parents, parents with intellectual disabilities certainly has the capacity to parent adequately. Given the right environment, given the right supports and given the right lifestyle, it might be the word, yeah. Um, is. is, will increase your capacity. Having DCJ in your life decreases your capacity because your anxiety increases. And with any person, when your anxiety is increased, your capacity diminishes. So it's like, it's a double, a double-edged sword, you know. Put them in a great environment, have someone that's really supportive in your life, you can do really, really well as a parent. Have DCJ there and documenting every word, everything you say, making it negative, it's a negative point of view. I mean, some of the things I've read in affidavits completely untrue or misleading, you know. But the parents have the capacity to parent quite adequately, given the right environment and supports and people in their lives.
Mr. Cliff, can I ask you then, from your perspective and in your observations in practice, if you could tell us about the clients that you represent as a lawyer? If you can tell us about the challenges that they face, in particular the First Nations clients?
Okay, well, typically my clients are young women, they all have intellectual disabilities. The challenges they'll face is simply being accepted in the larger society. They'll tend to be alienated and marginalised. Being young and inexperienced, they may make poor choices at times. And will often make bad connections with partners that they will need some assistance with, like support. It's not often that that support is available in a timely way. People tend to think that, people tend to look at the disability first and assume that the disability means you don't have any capacity at all, rather than looking at the person and looking at what the person's motivated to do and providing the support to the person to help them do what they would like to achieve, which is generally to be a good parent.
And for your clients that are First Nations parents with disability, in terms of their interactions with the department and case officers, are you able to tell us how you see cultural competency from the department's offices being relevant to the outcomes for those clients?
I guess the largest, the thing that jumps out is that parents are really scared of the department and defensive when it comes to the department. And I think that for First Nations parents, the history of First Nations people in this country is one of unfortunate just interventions, stolen generations, massacres, there has been a litany of failures by the Australian governments and the colonial governments before then, which is reflected now in families that have been broken apart by trauma. So, yeah, that a person who's grown up with that kind of background is going to have a real difficulty engaging with a representative of a department that they see as largely there to police them rather than support them.
One of the things that you've mentioned in your statement, you talk about the child protection system appearing opaque to parents. Just explain what you mean by that.
Well, it's, it's very difficult to know. Parents constantly say, I don't know what the department wants me to do, I've done this, this and this. But they're still saying, I can't have my children back. So it's often parents are given unclear or unrealistic sets of goals to achieve and said that this is going to do these things, this will help you get your children back. And which is not really, it's not really true. I mean, parents generally will do anything and everything. More often than not, it doesn't result in having your children restored to you. And there's so many points within the system that can cause failures, that get in the way of successful restoration.
One of the other things you've spoken about is about a lack of consistency in terms of within the state and in particular from, between individual community service centres, there might be differences in caseworkers, inconsistencies there. Can you just tell us about that?
Yeah, well, that is true. We tend to notice that, like, if you get a referral and the parent that you're working with is under the jurisdiction of certain office, you're going to know that you've got a really hard fight against you because that office may have a culture of removing, very quick to remove. And cultures within offices can change, so, you know, an office that's, that at one time is bad could go good and be more willing to work with parents and provide adequate early support. Or two people within the one office can do very different things. So it's kind of, you're just sort of hoping that you get a caseworker who is familiar with parenting with disability and is not, doesn't have a preconceived idea that a parent with a disability is going to be inadequate.
Now, let me just ask you about that aspect. When dealing with the department, in your observations and in your experience, are there adjustments that are made, taken into account by caseworkers when they perform their roles?
There are adjustments are made by good caseworkers, but look, I'd say it's more often not the case that adjustments are made. So, you know, I have seen caseworkers go to some attempts to make adjustments in the way they communicate, communicating more simply and using different methods to communicate. And then I've seen other offices, and I mean, just recently, where I heard from a mother who I gave advice to, who I said it'd be really good if you took, able to take a support person with you when you're speaking with the department, that's your right. And the mother has fed back to me, you know, the caseworker thinks that's not a good idea, support people would just get in the way. It's sort of, it's not recognising the fact that a person with an intellectual disability, one of the greatest deficits is communication and support to ensure clear communication would be pretty crucial.
Could I ask you, Ms. Wren, from your perspective and in your experience, is the department able to provide or facilitate other supports for parents with disability, particularly First Nation parents with disability?
The department itself generally don't and won't. I have had the department call me and make referrals to me on a regular basis, they're my highest referral point. But for them to actually organise First Nations or relevant or culturally appropriate supports for these parents, I haven't seen that. I'm usually the one that will make those referrals. I'm usually the one that will set that up.
Now, I want to ask you in particular about early supports for parents. If you can tell us about that, that's an aspect of your role as an advocate?
Yes, it's, it is easier to keep a baby rather than have a baby restored. So the sooner that I know a parent is pregnant, say, you know, as soon as, you know, on the first trimester, I will call the department and I will start asking around for prenatal worker, is there one, who is it, and start advocating and agitating that actual office to get them involved so that the prenatal worker and us, the parent and myself, can start talking about concerns and be able to address those concerns before baby is born, so baby can go home safely. And that's one of the, Kate is one of the examples there.
I've come to ask you about Kate's particular case, but in terms of the things that the department can support or facilitate at that stage, can you just describe for us the sort of things that can be done or are available?
Well, First Nations, they actually have perinatal conferences. And that is three meetings with the whole team of people that includes social workers from hospitals, health, DCJ, advocates, support workers, caseworkers. They all get involved and we talk about their strengths, concerns, and their dreams and desires. And in those three meetings, you should be able to get to a point where baby can go home safely. Also, there's family group conferences where the whole family gets together. So with First Nations people, the culture is to have community and get community involved. So those family group conferences are really important because people then can put their hands up to be able to assist the parent in what needs to be, you know, what needs to be addressed. So if there's a concern around breastfeeding, there could be a person within the community that can assist mum with the breastfeeding. That's just an example, that's just, you know. So they can do that, the department does hold those perinatal conferences, they do hold the family group conferences. And the facilitators for those conferences are usually Aboriginal, so that is culturally appropriate. However, I've had to put names in for these facilitators because the department seemed to, I, in my opinion, I feel that they lack the knowledge of who's who. And I've been fortunate enough to have connections with facilitators that are culturally appropriate.
Can I ask you, Mr. Cliff, about, on the issue of the supports that might be provided, either early supports or later supports once a parent has a child? Can you tell us about how important it is from your point of view that those supports for First Nations people be provided or facilitated through the community and community organisations?
Okay, the reason I think that it should be provided through community organisations is that to have the department that can remove your children from you and take you to court, also being the department that offers you support is, tends to be a very conflicting role. It makes it difficult for the parent to believe that the support is support. However, if the support was delivered through a community organisation and for First Nations parents, ideally through a First Nations community organisation that they're familiar and comfortable with, they would have some confidence that that support is actual support. You know, parents have often complained that they feel that when support is being put in, that they're just being monitored, it's an evidence gathering exercise rather than support. So I think that separation of the roles is just incredibly important.
And Ms. Wren, if I could just go back to you then and follow up with you about your involvement in Kate's case. If you could just start, please, if you could tell us when you first became involved and what the contact was like at that time?
My first day in this role was when I first met Kate. So that was my first matter that I dealt with in this role was Kate, got a phone call from Kate saying, I've just given, I had, I've been having a parenting capacity assessment, I broke water, I've given birth, and docs are here, what do I do? So I spoke to the caseworker and she seemed quite reasonable and quite agreeable with having Kate being involved with her child. So I spoke to the caseworker and the conversation was around the child going to kinship care, but Kate having daily contact. And then when I, then Kate got on the phone and I asked the caseworkers to leave the room because this is a conversation I needed to have in confidence with Kate. And I spoke to her, she said, I don't want the baby taken, I want to keep the baby. And I apologised and said, I can't stop this. They're taking the baby, but let's look at, you haven't seen the baby every day, you keep breastfeeding and you keep having that connection and that bond with your baby. So that's my first engagement with Kate, was on the phone and advocating for her very strongly on the phone. And the baby was, went into kinship care. And for the first six months, Kate saw the baby every day and was able to breastfeed daily.
Now, that was Kate's second baby. Were you also involved when she had her third baby?
I was involved briefly, not as intensively as I have with the last baby, only because I didn't even know she was pregnant. She gave birth, the baby was removed at birth. And the things that I was doing, I was advocating for her to receive good contact. The caseworker was not pro-Kate, she was very, it was very much against her having her children or keeping her children. And so I was advocating for Kate to be able to see her child on a more of a regular basis than what they were doing. And the stuff they were saying about Kate was quite concerning because they were saying, well, they don't have, she doesn't have a bond with him, with the child, so. But the thing is, they removed the child before Kate could even have skin-on-skin contact with the child, so. They said some pretty nasty things about Kate. And I was advocating on Kate's behalf that, you know, Kate's doing her best and she was doing really, really well.
Now, can I ask you, Mr. Cliff, in a case where a parent, a mother, has had one child removed and then they give birth and have a second child, you've spoken in your statement about the act operating for a presumption of removal, can you just tell us about that?
In Section 106A of the Care Act, it basically operates that, you know, if you have had a child previously removed and placed into care, any following children that you have, if the department then decides that they need to be removed and puts a care application in front of the court, the presumption then is that the child is in need of care and protection. It's a presumption that sort of does away with the need to prove that the child was in need of care and protection, which is unfortunate. The only way you can get around that is if you can get involved early enough to work with the department and the parent to show that the situation has changed and that the relevant circumstances have changed, so there's no need to lodge a care application. But that rarely happens, so generally what happens is matters go to court and the presumption comes into effect. And it's just assumed that this child is in need of care and protection because the first one was.
Mr. Cliff, may I ask, what is the presumption? Is that something that courts apply or you're just referring to the factual situation?
No, no, it's applied by the courts, commissioner.
And what's the source of the presumption?
It's Section 106A of the Children and Young Persons Care and Protection Act, New South Wales, 1998.
Thank you.
Now, if I go back to you, Ms. Wren, you then were involved at an earlier stage when Kate was pregnant with her fourth child?
Correct, yeah, she was eight weeks pregnant when she walked into the office, I'm eight weeks pregnant, what do I, what do I do?
Now, when she came in and said that to you, had you previously spoken to her to say to her, when she had her third child, you need to come and see me sooner?
Yes, I did, when she had her third child, I said, next time you're pregnant, like, as soon as you find out and you know you're definitely pregnant, come in and see me. Because then we can really work really hard and we can, you know, discuss that, address all the issues and the concerns that the department have. And then we can fight and have a really good chance this time.
You speak about in your statement that when Kate did come to see you at the office, that you made the phone call to the department's helpline. Can you just tell us about that, how that came about?
I, at that time, there was a little bit of a shift in, within the department. They started getting prenatal workers in, so it was a new role that they had in the They started getting prenatal workers in, so it was a new, new role that they had in the, um, in the different CSCs, so Community Services Centres. So I rang the, um, the office that it was closest to Kate and asked if there was a prenatal worker there, and there was. Got the names and emails and phone numbers and I started ringing her on a regular basis. I asked her, um, I, I basically said at the end of the day, I'm not letting Kate have the baby so you can remove, you need to engage with Kate today. This needs to happen now. So we can work with her, we can, you know, address all the concerns that you have. Um, and she's the one that advised me to call the helpline and told me to use the words, I am calling for assistance. This is not a risk of serious harm report, this is for assistance. So I spoke to Kate about that, went through a bit of a script with her, she agreed. Um, and I did this with Kate, I wouldn't do it without her, so she was next to me. I told them about Kate and I actually told the helpline that Kate is here with me. And that, and she spoke to them saying, yes, I'm here with my advocate. And that's when we started to have that conversation. This is what we want, this is how we, and this has to be done. We are not waiting for baby to be born. So section 106A can be, um, used against her. So, yes, we asked for assistance on a number of occasions.
Now, Ms Ren, you, you explain in your statement that you'd never done this before and you haven't done it since.
No.
But you go on to say it was, it was an arduous task, that it took about twenty minutes in the phone call and you repeatedly had to emphasise, we're wanting help, this isn't about a report of harm or risk, we want help.
Yes, it, it was, uh, this is, I, and I remember saying to Kate at that time, I said, this is such, this is hard work, to make a report is hard work. People must have a lot of time on their hands to make all these reports, especially the malicious reports that we con, I mean, especially Kate, she was getting, there was a few malicious reports against her. So it was, it was, um, I think it was tense because it was a helpline and we're both, I mean, I was nervous as well, to be completely honest, I was nervous to make that phone call, but, um, it worked out in the end. But I was hassling the prenatal worker nearly on a daily basis in the end because I was not going to let this happen.
And just on that point, Ms Ren, you, you go on to say that even after making the phone call, there were still further delays in, uh, eventually getting the help from the department. And you had to persist.
Yes, that's exactly right. Um, I was ringing her, this prenatal worker, nearly on a daily basis, nearly, um. We laugh about it now, but it wasn't funny back then, um, because she said, oh, we have to wait for the allocation. There hasn't been, there, there, there isn't a report and there's all these excuses. And in the end, I said, this isn't, if you don't do this, I'll go up higher. I had to because they were sitting on their hands, they weren't doing anything. And I knew we could make this one work, definitely work, because it was early enough.
Now, eventually, the, the department agreed to allocate the prenatal worker that you'd been speaking to, to Kate's case.
Yes, I only wanted her and no one else. Reason being is that the other caseworkers in the, in that particular centre, um, were very much, they, they had removed the other children. Um, and they were telling this prenatal worker that they have to remove the baby. So it was fortunate enough, this prenatal worker was, um, had a good manager as well. So she had support within her own, um, team. And she was, um, advocating on Kate's behalf for them to keep the baby after, um, the other caseworkers were telling her to remove, because they removed all the other children.
Now, eventually, when the caseworker was allocated, um, Kate was able to get support and then when she had the baby, intensive support. Were you involved in that stage?
Yes, I was, I was involved from the time she was eight weeks pregnant to the time that the, um, that DCJ closed the file, we had a closing meeting even, um, which we've never had before. So it was such a big, it was such a big intensive work that we did with Kate that, um, that yes, I was part of the whole process. We had many, many meetings at the office, we had a lot of home visits. We had a lot of, um, it was, there was a lot of work put into it. I was not really happy with the intensive family services that they put in because it was twenty-two hours a day for six weeks. And twenty-two hours of having someone in your life is pretty invasive.
I want to ask you, um, both, but can I start with you, Ms Ren? I want to ask you about, um, the, the issue that Mr Cliff was speaking about before about some inconsistencies that he's observed within, um, the way the department approaches your clients. Uh, is that something that you've experienced, Ms Ren, in, um, the, the assessments that are made of parenting capacity and, and the programmes that, um, the department suggests that your clients undertake?
Absolutely. The inconsistency is one of the hardest things to deal with. Um, the, the parenting capacity assessments, I've been too numerous as a support person. And I can't tell you how many because I've been to so many. And not one has been the same, not one. So, I mean, how can you, um, say that the reports are consistent or the reports are true or real when every single person that assesses a parent is completely different? The tools that they use are different, the questions that they use are different. Um, it's just, and it, it just makes no sense to me at all, at all.
You just mentioned about the tools. Uh, one of the things we've heard about is a, um, a structured decision-making tool. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, so I was fortunate enough to be part of one, um, SDM meeting. Um, only been to one because I had a very good working relationship with the caseworker and the manager. And they invited me to this, um, meeting and it was quite interesting. It's supposed, it's on a scaling basis, so they scale one to five, I think, I can't remember the numbers, but. Um, and it's basically, you have a casework specialist who doesn't know the situation, the family or the story. They just know what's on paper. The caseworker, the casework manager, the manager of this, of the centre, and I was there at this time. And it was all about what their opinion or views were, how it actually made the final decision. So it's supposed to, it's supposed to be objective, but it's very subjective. So, um, the one that I went to was an Aboriginal family. Um, and mum had also mental health and it was, I had to really fight tooth and nail for them to listen to what mum's side of the, um, the story is. So at the end of the day, they let mum take baby home, but it was, yeah, it's quite, um, it's subjective. So whatever biases or whatever issues you may have comes into it.
Now, Mr Cliff, can I ask you about that type of tool? Do you have any familiarity with that? Is that something that you've experienced in your role?
I'm aware of the tool. I don't experience it so much day to day in my role because I don't do the sort of support work that Julia does with clients. But yeah, I've taken the time to familiarise myself with the tool and understand how it works because it's important for me to know how, um, caseworkers come to their decisions.
Now, just following on from your earlier observations, um, in terms of the, the supports that are available for First Nations parents with disability who are your clients, um, can I ask each of you, are you able to tell us from your experience and observations, um, how appropriate the services are that are available when, or referred, when the department refers your clients to those services or requests them to undertake those programmes? I'll ask you first, Ms Ren.
I, um, I worked with a father that was, um, one of the stolen generations. He was institutionalised. He was very, very anti-religious because he was told to forget about his culture and his family. He was also told that his parents were killed or they were dead. They, DCJ allocated an Aboriginal caseworker and she had a crucifix on her necklace. And, um, she then sent their son to, um, Sunday School and to church and told him that he enjoys it and that's what he's going to do. This traumatised the father because of his history and background. There are no Aboriginal, there is, there are a few Aboriginal workers within DCJ that do come and are supposed to support their families and are supposed to do culturally appropriate supports. I have seen it, in my opinion, what I have seen in my role, the DCJ workers that are supposed to do that, I haven't seen them do it properly. Um, however, what I have done, I get Aboriginal organisations to come in and work with DCJ, work with the families, so it becomes culturally appropriate. So it's the services that I call in and it's the services that I put in place, not DCJ. That's what I have done in my role.
Now, Mr Cliff, in your statement, um, you've spoken about some matters that you, you would like to see done differently or changed from the department's point of view. And one of the things is you've, um, stressed caseworkers receiving training in both intellectual disability and parenting, uh, as well as, um, training in, in, um, supporting First Nations parents with disability. Can I ask you if you could tell us about those, why you think those two things are, are matters that would help make things better for your clients?
I think that it's important, I think that it's important that caseworkers understand that the greatest, um, one of the greatest jeopardy's a parent with intellectual disability will face is the miscommunication that can occur between the caseworker and the parent because of the communication deficits that are associated with the disability. Therefore, I think it's really important that caseworkers have to be alive to how they communicate and to take extra, extra pains to make sure that they are being understood by the parent and that they also take time to listen to and understand the parent. Um, I also think that as far as First Nations clients go, the, the, it's, it's, it would be, seem to me silly to, to ignore the history of this country and the history of the stolen generations. Um, I think that needs to be taken into account, um, by any person who's working with First Nations clients. You need to understand that First Nations parents have largely suffered at the hands of white system.
Now, Ms Ren, can I just ask you one final question on, on this area? Um, you also suggest in your statement that, um, programmes for First Nations parents with disability, uh, that support them, that are run by Aboriginal community-controlled organisations is the way to go. Why do you say that?
Because they understand the parenting, the culture and the way that community is, where the other parenting courses is just paper-driven, it is, um, it's tokenistic really. But, um, I have seen some really good, um, results in the one-on-one parenting courses with Aboriginal organisations, with Aboriginal parents. And, um, they engage, you know, the parents engage, the parents are excited. You know, and you need to have that, you need to be able to have them excited and happy that they are pregnant, not scared. And the anxiety is being, you know, going through the roof.
Yes, thank you, Chair. That's all the questions that I have. Um, uh, I can indicate that I understand that Ms Finesse for the State um, may wish to ask some questions after any questions the commissioners may have.
Yes, thank you, Mr Crowley. Um, Mr Cliff, well, tell us when you come into a case. Point, are you involved?
Um, Commissioner, I, I don't necessarily work on, on matters that, that Julia works on. We don't always share matters, we actually share a lot of, um, experience, knowledge. Um, so I will, I will generally come into a matter, the first contact I'll have with a parent is they'll probably, it'll be an advice appointment. Um, I'll speak to them and then it may be a matter where it seems that the, one of the larger issues is is that the disability is being focused on rather than parenting. And if that's the case, then I might, and if I've got the capacity, I may take the matter on as a court representation matter.
And by that time, uh, I take it, the department would have instituted some sort of treaty for care of the child?
That would be, yeah, that's correct, Your Honour. I mean, if I'm able to be involved early, we might be able to, um, support the parent, have meetings with the department and they may not, um, file a care application. However, if they do file a care application and I've already been working with the parent and I've got the capacity to take them on, I, I would look at taking the matter on to represent them in court.
As a practical matter, how important is section one hundred and six A subsection two, the one that creates the presumption?
Uh, it's, it's in use every day in the children's court, Your Honour. Um, it's, it's a very low threshold. It's the civil standard of proof in the children's court as to whether the matter is established. So the first question is, is the child or would a child be at risk if it wasn't taken? And the, the threshold is extremely low. And generally, the presumption raised section 106A is enough to, to, um, get the case over the threshold and establish it.
I suppose in theory, if a person has had a child placed into care previously, woman, and the woman gives birth, all that would be required is the department to say, this is the second child, the first child has been put into care, that's a prima facie case under section one hundred and six A.
It is a prima facie case. I mean, they would, they would, um, generally they may also, uh, focus on other reasons. So they might, um, I mean, disability is specifically excluded as a reason for removal, but they may suggest that the, you know, the parent's capacity flowing on from the disability is also a factor, um, which would then sort of bolster their section 106A case.
Yep, thank you. Uh, just one other thing, um, from your statements, I assume, are you both part-time?
I work three days a week.
I work four days a week.
And who funds the organisation?
Uh, various funding bodies, federal and state. Um, our executive officer looks after the money, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mason, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, thank you, Chair. Uh, and thank you very much for giving your evidence today. Uh, and also giving us, uh, that broader context of the support that you gave and asked continuing to give to Kate. Uh, I'm really interested in this idea of, uh, child protection systems and the progress of them becoming, moving towards less Western-centric systems. Um, and we're talking about a very long timeline. Um, and you've mentioned this morning in, in your evidence around stolen generations and the impact of colonisation. So we're talking about a, a long history. Uh, in the timeline of Kate, at which point is she in the environment of a Indigenous-centric system? Or on the whole, is she basically, uh, moving through Western-centric systems with effort trying to include and insert Indigenous culture and that safety of culture? Was this interesting in your, in your views and thoughts on that question?
Not going to me. Um, she is, her, so her, um, foster mother is a, yeah, well-respected Aboriginal woman elder. And thank goodness for her, she's able to envelop Kate into the Aboriginal culture and history. Um, but that, Kate tries very, she tries very hard to be part of her culture. She says that her culture is actually what kept her, um, alive and gave her that strength to be able to survive and go through what she has gone through. Um, but other than that, there's, she, um, she doesn't, she, she loves, she loves her culture. But other than that, there's, she, she doesn't, she loves, she loves her culture and she does embrace it, but it's, yeah, it's quite, I think it's minimal.
Yeah, if I might add, it's pretty much a white Western system with, you know, some embellishments.
And fortunate for her, she does have her foster mother that is just a wonderful woman that does amazing work with her community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkinson, do you have any questions?
No, thank you, thank you for your evidence today.
Thank you. Commissioner McEwan?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms Finesse?
Yes, um.
You wish to make an application?
I do, thank you. Do you hear me?
Yes, with some difficulty, but carry on and I'll let you know if you fade into mute.
Thank you. My application to ask a question primarily of Mr Cliff, relation to the numbers which underlie the various comments he's made in his statement about numbers of people and what's common or otherwise in his appearance firstly, and secondly about access to policies and the life which he referred to in his statement.
Access to policies?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure what that means.
In paragraph 24 of his statement, he refers, that advocates are hard-pressed to find policy and procedural guidelines.
Oh, I see. Yeah, so they're the two matters you want to ask questions on?
They are, Commissioner.
Yes, well, go ahead, thank you.
But Cliff, you've indicated that you work three days a week, that's correct?
That's correct.
And over the period of the last two years, how many clients have you seen who are First Nations with a disability who have engaged with the child protection system?
I couldn't give you an exact number, but the, we gave a figure that I quoted for the last 12 months, which I can't remember off the top of my head, and that's pretty much typical of every year. But of course, we're a small service, we're a part-time service, so we don't see a large volume of clients.
So are we talking about a dozen, more or less than a dozen?
Oh, there'd be more than a dozen, certainly.
Perhaps if you could help us with some general ideas of how many? I think Ms Wren is about five at the moment.
That's right, yeah. Look, I really couldn't give you a number off the top of my head, I'd be afraid of misleading the Commission. As I said, the number that I've given in my statement was, were taken from the statistics which we've recorded the last 12 months.
Perhaps you could assist?
Pardon me, pardon me for interrupting. So you're referring to numbers given in your statement? Which paragraph, please, are you referring to, to help Ms Finesse and myself?
It's paragraph 17, Chair.
Yes, thank you. Is that the paragraph you mean?
Yeah, okay, I've got that. So I was looking at the period from the 1st of July last year till the 30th of June this year. The Parents Programme accepted 74 clients, so out of those, 20% are Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander.
And of those 15, Mr Cliff, how many did you assist with legal advice or representation in the child protection system?
I would have assisted all of them with legal advice because our practices, they first come to us and they have legal advice, and then I might refer them on to parent advocate. And only a small number of them I would go on to work with. I would do, I do a lot of minor casework, so I do a lot of sort of letter-writing and small jobs for people. But for instance, at the moment, I've only got one matter in court because I'm only working three days a week and I need to be able to give my clients more time than they would get from a private lawyer.
So that it's the case that there's fewer than 15 people a year that you were representing for?
Oh, certainly, yes.
Now.
Sorry, I was just going to add that I'm in contact, I work, I convene a network of care and protection lawyers, so I'm in contact with a lot of other lawyers who have the same experiences that I do.
But your statement's based on your experience, I take it?
Pardon, sorry?
The statement is based on your experience, isn't it?
Yes, that's right. It's based on my experience.
Thank you. Now, you referred to this material being statistics that are kept by the service. Is it the case that you keep statistics as to parents who you see who are First Nations with a disability and whether or not they were in out-of-home care as a child?
Look, we keep statistics as to disability, as to whether people are First Nations. We don't keep statistics as to whether people were in out-of-home care as a child, but in gaining their instructions, what we find is usually, you know, more often than not, our clients were in out-of-home care as children.
But that's not recorded on your database, but that may be recorded in the individual case files, is that right?
Definitely recorded in individual case files, yes. It becomes an issue, it's usually raised by the department themselves because they see that being raised in out-of-home care as a risk that needs to be addressed.
So is the same in relation to parents who have their children removed from the maternity ward, but that is not on your database, but may well be in the individual files?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it also that whether or not a support present, a support person was present would be in the case file but not the database?
Yeah, yeah, if it was, you know, if it's our case files, it'd be fairly comprehensive, so we'd be noting whether the parent had support or not when they were speaking with the department.
And similarly, if they were removed, in your opinion, because of a parental disability, that would be recorded in the file?
We would recall all the reasons for removal that the department has given, yep.
So is it the case, in preparation for making your statement, you reviewed all of the files in which you had been involved to determine the numbers of people that fitted within the four categories I've referred to?
No, in preparation for my statement, I asked our admin section for breakdown of our stats for the last year and I used my own knowledge of what I know about my parents, the parents I work with, as to their backgrounds, their previous experience.
So have you provided the Royal Commission with the breakdown of those statistics? Because the only one in your statement is a paragraph 17.
No, no, my statement is all that's been provided to the Commission.
Thank you. Can I just turn to the second topic, Mr Cliff, and that is in relation to the policies of the department? If you can turn to paragraph 24 of your statement, do you have that in front of you?
Yeah, I do.
Now, you heard there, "Ad advocates and lawyers find the system complex", is it that?
Yes, that's right, yeah.
And it's the case that you find the system complex, isn't it?
The system is extremely complex.
Thank you, so the answer to my question is yes?
Yes.
Now, you then continue on, "But advocates", by which I'm, take it you mean you, right?
Well, yeah, advocates, yes, I guess I would be, normally, I'd include all advocates, so non-legal advocates as well as lawyers.
So this is your statement, Mr Cliff? And what you're saying here is that you are hard-pressed to find policy and procedural guidelines that may assist in improving accountability?
That's right. There have been numerous revisions of the department's website over the years that I've been in the job, and so it's not always easy to locate a policy on any matter when you would like to locate it. I've managed to collect some.
When did you last access the website?
I haven't accessed the website this year.
So you didn't access for the purpose of making the statement?
No, it was based, the statement is based upon my experience over the last five years.
You aware of the practice standards which are on the website?
Yeah, I am, I'm aware of that.
And those practice standards provide the reader of that document with knowledge and understanding of the standards that are to be applied by caseworkers and others who can make that?
Yes, that's correct.
So in the event that you were dealing, and you were of the view that those standards were not complied with, that would be a matter that you could take up further because the standards wouldn't come to you, right?
It might possibly be a matter to take up further. I mean, if the matter was a court matter, the issue is whether or not the child is safe and whether the child can safely be returned to the parents. We wouldn't be looking at the work of the department leading up until that point.
Have you had the opportunity of reading Mr Coates Trotter, who's the secretary of the department's, two statements?
No, I haven't had the chance to read that, I'm sorry.
Were they made available to you?
I don't think they have been made available to me.
You weren't able to access that?
No, I haven't, I haven't, no.
Now, had you had that opportunity and taken it, you'd see that there is a practice advice called "Working with Parents with Disabilities". Has anyone brought that to your attention?
Yeah, I'm familiar with that document.
Where did you access that document?
I believe that, well, I got it via the department, I can't remember whether I had to search for it on the website or whether a caseworker sent it to me, but it's sort of, there doesn't seem to be a single place where you can find every document, well, at least not the last time I looked, so I've had to collect them as I go along.
Well, I think you've said you haven't accessed the website just over 12 months, have you?
I haven't accessed the website this year.
So do you have a copy of that document in front of you? I thought Ms Wren might have passed it there.
Yeah, I have it here.
Now, there are various states that document, and I'm not going to take you to all of them, but can I suggest, given that you've read that document, that many, if not all of your concerns about the attitudes of caseworkers are dealt with in a way that you would accept in this document? Do you accept that from me?
I accept that the document describes what the ideal ways of working, yes.
And it's the case, isn't it, that the document also refers to a document which was authored by your organisation called "An Introduction to Intellectual Disability"?
Yes, that's true.
And that is certainly something that you'd be pleased that caseworkers were reading?
If caseworkers read it, we would be pleased, yes.
Thank you. I just have one question for Ms Wren. Ms Wren, you've heard what Mr Cliff had to say about the data that's available to him, I take it that's the same data that's available to you?
Yes, it is, but we also collect if there's domestic violence, if there's risk of homelessness and background, if the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islanders or any other culled backgrounds. But there is no home care indicator to tip, but in hearing that, I think that's a really good idea, I might add that to our database.
Now, you've indicated that you've got about five First Nations people with disability you're working with at the moment?
Yes.
Are you able to, on an annual basis, how many people that fit that category that you work with?
It fluctuates all the time considering that I work with the families for quite a length of time, I could work with a family up to three years purely because DCJ have been involved for that long. So I would say there will be approximately, I don't really want to give a number because it does change all the time, so I always give the numbers of the time that I've been asked that question. So this is an indication that, that's why I do percentages rather than numbers, but usually between 50 to 70% of my workload or caseload are always First Nations families.
So are we looking at similar sort of number to Mr Cliff, dozen or so over a period, generally speaking?
Generally speaking, can be, but I work, we work, we don't always work with the same families, so we try and spread ourselves out because we are a part-time service. But I would say, yeah, that would be a generalisation, that would be, yeah, 12 to 15 members a year.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ms Finesse. Is there anything arising out of that, Mr Crowley?
No, thank you, Chair.
Well, thank you very much. In place, thank you for your evidence, Mr Cliff and Ms Wren, we appreciate you all coming to give evidence. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
What do we do now?
Chair, the next witness we have is Ms Cathy Pereira, Mr Power will take her evidence.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Mr Power?
Chair, the next witness is Cathy Pereira, and the Commissioners will find her statement at Tender Bundle B, Volume 2, at Tab 14. I asked to tender this statement into evidence and asked that it be marked as 8.13.
Yes.
Thank you. And Ms Pereira is on screen, Chair?
Yes, she is. Good morning, depending, no, good afternoon. Ms Pereira.
Good morning, good morning, Commissioner.
Thank you very much for coming to give evidence. If you would be good enough to follow the instruction of Commissioner Atkinson's associate, he will administer the affirmation too.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Ms Pereira, Mr Power will now ask you questions, he is in our Brisbane hearing room. And just so you're aware, Commissioners Atkinson are in the Brisbane hearing room, Commissioner McEwan and myself are in the sitting premises of the Royal Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Ms Pereira, could you tell the Commission your name?
Cathy Pereira.
And have you prepared for the Commission a 34-page statement dated the 12th of November 2020?
Yes.
And are the contents of that statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
They are, yes.
And since 2008, have you been the principal legal officer and coordinator of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders Women's Legal Service North Queensland?
Yes.
And prior to taking on that role in 2008, after your admission as a solicitor in 1993, have you worked with the Indigenous Family Violence Unit in Rockhampton and the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Women's Legal and Advocacy Service in Brisbane?
Yes.
Now, just to speak briefly about the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Women's Legal Service North Queensland, what level of staffing does the funding for your organisation allow?
It's fairly small funding, so we have sufficient for 2.5 solicitors, two community development workers, a paralegal, and some admin support, although it's minimal.
Right, and your statement details... Right. And, um, your statement details, uh, the work that your organisation, organisation does and the areas of Queensland that it covers. Um, if I can turn specifically to your clients who are First Nation parents with disabilities, uh, what percentage, if you can say, are your clients who have a disability?
Um, so in our, um, in the last financial year, it was about 15%.
Right. And how, and sorry, I apologise, I cut you off. Um, how is that data collected?
Um, so when someone wants advice, uh, or comes in for an appointment, we do an intake. Part of the intake process is to ask whether the person has a disability. Um, if they disclose that, then it's recorded on the intake sheet.
Um, a- and in terms of financial disadvantage, what percentage of your First Nation clients are, are financially disadvantaged?
Uh, about 92% in the past financial year.
Now, I want to, um, turn to a section of your statement, um, which deals with resourcing and care for expectant First Nation mothers. Um, now, the commission has heard of, uh, birth suite removal of newly born babies who are then taken into care. Have you yourself seen that occur?
I certainly have. In the time that I've been here, I've seen it. I can only say it's not uncommon.
Right. Now, your statement, um, at paragraph, um, and, um, sorry, Ms. Pereira, if you could just speak up a, a little bit from our end, is it somewhat low in volumes?
Uh, I'm sorry, is that better?
Yes, thank you. Um, at paragraph 40 of your statement, um, you say that the system is not working to provide expectant First Nation mothers with a disability with support to participate in decision-making and provide them with sufficient preparatory supports and resources to parents, to parent their child. Um, now, could you explain why you say that and what you've seen in practice with regard to expectant mothers?
Yes. Um, so section 21A of the Child Protection Act provides that, um, that if a, um, a mother is expecting, and sorry, I'll be paraphrasing here, but, um, um, if she's expecting, the department, um, is to offer her, um, supports if there's a risk that the baby will be removed. All right. So, um, the way that that is carried out in practice is rather variable. I can give you, um, two examples of that. One example would be where the, and this is a very common one, where two child safety officers turn up on the doorstep, so they ask the mother if she wants some support, uh, maybe ask her a few questions. Um, and, and then if she declines that support, that would be the end of it. Um, the other approach that I've seen, which is sort of extreme to the other end, was two child safety officers turn up on the doorstep, they threaten the mother that if she doesn't sign a safety plan, that the baby will be removed at birth. So that's the other, the other type of situation. Um, um, but the more common one is that the mother is given very little support.
Now, in terms of your organisation, um, working with expectant First Nation mothers, um, in those scenarios, if contacted at an early time, what could your organisation do?
So if, if we become aware, then the first thing that we would do would be to establish whether or not the department considers the baby would be at risk of removal. Um, and if so, what issues need to be addressed? Um, and then we can assist the, the mother by, can, you know, to the extent we're able to, we connect them with, um, uh, other support services to assist them to address the issues. So for example, um, if, if an issue is domestic violence, then we would try to connect the mother in with domestic violence counselling, perhaps apply to the court for a domestic violence order. So take practical steps to make sure that she's addressing any risk issues and work with the mother on that basis. Um, now, we've only got limited capacity and that's one of the issues that I raise in my statement, that it really shouldn't be up to our service to, you know, to do that. And to an extent, the department would play a role if they, uh, if we can persuade them to do referrals and so on. But very often, it takes positive action by someone outside the department to get the department to do that. Um, uh, whereas even though they might be quite happy to just simply take a mother's initial refusal as the end of the story, um.
Ms. Pereira, are you, um, dealing with a situation where you or the mother take the initiative in, um, taking steps to provide support to the mother? Or are you talking about a situation, pardon me, where the department has expressed some concern about the forthcoming birth and the position of the baby?
Um, so if we become aware that a mother is expecting, then we can write to the department and say, is the baby considered to be at risk? And if so, what are the risks? Um, and then either ask the department to connect the mother in with support services. But because that is more likely to be slow and convoluted, we would do everything we could to try and get her into support services. And sometimes the mothers know that themselves and they take their own initiative and connect in with services.
The way section 21A operates is that it applies if the chief executive reasonably suspects that the child may be in need of protection after he or she is born.
Yes.
What is the, um, purpose of you taking the initiative in contacting the department before the department does it?
Um, if we have reason to believe that the mother may be considered to be at risk, or if, for example, she has had a visit from two child safety officers and who have, uh, said, do you want support? And she's declined it, then that would be the trigger for us to, to get involved and to make those inquiries.
If the, um, child is, uh, or the, the child that's expected is a First Nations child, then support has to be offered to the pregnant woman by the department under the act. Does that in fact happen in your experience?
Um, as I've explained in my statement, very often it can be a, a box ticking exercise. So we've gone round to see the mother, she declined our support, and we've closed the file. And I can say that from experience that, um, First Nations mother with a disability, uh, sorry, expectant mother with a disability was approached. She said, no, I don't want anything to do with the department because of her own trauma from her own childhood. Um, and the next thing that happened was that they closed the file and didn't do any further work. She took her own initiative from there, um, on legal advice that, you know, she should ensure that she can demonstrate that there is no risk. Um, so she took her own initiative and signed up to programmes. Um, she had developed a reasonably good family network support, um, but the baby was still removed.
Um, you've spoken there about a First Nation mother who has been approached but refused, or sorry, declined, um, uh, those services offered by the department. From your experience, speaking to First Nation clients, why would there be that refusal if in fact, in this case, the mother did actually search out supports herself?
Um, so the initial refusal is the reaction that many of our clients have to the Department of Child Safety, particularly when they're expecting a baby. There's this terror that their baby is going to be removed. And speaking with older First Nations women who've had the experience of being removed as children, one of their great fears is that their children will be removed or that their children's children will be removed. There's always this underlying fear that the children will be removed.
Right. Now, you, you deal with this, uh, in your statement at paragraphs 49 to 52 and elsewhere. But could you tell the commission, um, why it's important, uh, for First Nation community-controlled organisations to be part of that support system and that referral system?
Um, well, first of all, it's, it's very important, um, that services that are working with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander women, I can only speak for women, um, that they be a service that's culturally competent. Um, it's like, um, if they're not culturally competent, there's going to be a number of barriers to the person working with them. There's going to be, uh, you know, misinterpretation or perhaps, uh, um, I don't know how to describe it, but there needs to be cultural competence to maximise the opportunity for the mother to actually engage with the service. Um, they also need to be trauma-informed and to realise that if, um, someone presents and maybe they have difficult behaviours or maybe they have, you know, evasive behaviours, that it's, it's related to trauma and that needs to be dealt with. They also need to be disability accredited. So to give you an example of why that's important, um, I worked with another woman who, um, when I came on board, um, nobody had done anything about her, you know, to see whether her hearing, to see what her hearing level was. There were, there were no tests had been done. She had, um, a number of disabilities and one of them was hearing. Um, it was really difficult to assess her capacity without that initial hearing test being done and that issue being addressed. And it was addressed by, um, by a service that she was working with. But it just seemed to have taken quite a long time to get to that point. Um, and when eventually that was addressed, it was clear that there was another issue as well, and that was capacity.
Now, turning then to, uh, an issue you raised about, uh, permanent care orders for children. At paragraphs 57 to 67 of your statement, you discuss what you see as the risks and dangers of permanent care orders and permanent permanency planning for First Nation children. Um, and in particular, you raise the issue of the, uh, the presumption, uh, under the act of a two-year time period, uh, for that to be, uh, dealt with. Uh, could you just explain to the commission what your concerns are in a First Nations context and particularly for First Nation parents with disability?
Certainly. Um, so there's a number of different types of long-term orders that can be put in place. There's long-term guardianship to the chief executive, long-term guardianship to another person, and permanent care orders. Um, the permanent care order is a particular type of order. Um, so one of the issues, first of all, is that the act provides that, um, if a child has been in care continuously under a child protection order for a period of two years, that time can't be extended. Um, and then there's another provision that it can be extended if it's in the best interests of the, um, the child. However...
Yeah, and sorry, to interpose there, it, it must be in the best interests of the child and that re-unification can be reasonably achieved in the proposed extended time period. Is that right?
Well, that would definitely be one of the criteria that the court would look at if it's going to extend the time. Um, so, you know, what, there's, um, so working with First Nations parents who, who have a disability, their needs are very complex. They may be dealing with a number of different issues at the same time. And, you know, all of that impacts on the capacity to advance re-unification. It may also be a departmental issue where the department, um, they're obliged to do a case plan every six months. Um, a case plan doesn't always happen at six months. There's often delays. Um, and if the parent is unrepresented, it's not clear whether the department is going to act in a way that's, it's going to advance re-unification, for example, by increasing contact visits with the child. Um, their perception of what may be appropriate may be different to what's actually appropriate in circumstances. And that's why it's important for the parent to have, um, legal representation. And one of the problems is that legal representation often drops off once an order's been made. So you've got somebody who got a child on a child protection order for two years, short-term custody to the chief executive for two years. Um, the case planning process, uh, sorry, once the order's been made, then legal aid doesn't usually provide another grant of aid unless there's legal proceedings on foot. So that means that they could be unrepresented when they're going to a family group meeting or having further case planning. Like, case planning does not have to be done in a family group meeting setting. But if you have a legal advocate who says, who's got an eye on the fact that the time's ticking for the two-year period, then they're going to do their best to try and make sure that the case plan matches with that two-year period. But it doesn't necessarily happen if the person is unrepresented for various reasons.
Right. Turning then to some positive changes that you've noted in your, uh, your statement. At paragraph 122 of your statement, you say that you have been, quote, "inspired by recent improvements to the extent of engagement of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander services through our family-led decision-making framework." Um, could you just explain what your experience has been with this? Uh, and what you consider can be done to further advance, uh, that, those improvements that you've seen in that section?
Oh, yeah. So one of the great, um, improvements that's come, probably come out of the Carmody Inquiry recommendations, actually, is, um, the, um, the, the perception that there needs to be more cultural engagement for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander families. Um, so I noticed that that is now in the Child Placement Principle in the Act, where it talks about a number of principles, including prevention and so on. But it, it comes out of the right to self-determination. And, um, so what happens is that the, the department now has quite a, it, it has more Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander workers. Um, that in itself wouldn't necessarily, um, improve things if you've got an overarching culture that's, um, uh, not culturally competent. But in the situation where organisations that are culturally competent, such as the, um, I mentioned in my submission, the, the, my evidence, the, um, Townsville Aboriginal and Islander Health Service, TARS. So they actually take on a lot of work, uh, around family-led decision-making. Um, and the way that the meetings are conducted is very different to the way the department very often conducts meetings. Um, so they're culturally competent. They'll always acknowledge the, um, uh, the elders and the people at the land on which they're working. They, um, they will always, um, um, understand the issues facing families, um, and the difficulties and barriers that a lot of parents face and a lot of families face in, um, trying to negotiate the system and trying to keep children safe. Um, and it's, you know, they're, they're speaking the same language as the parents. They understand, um, where the parents are coming from because they, uh, understand that cultural background as well. There's no, um, there's not the same cultural difference that parents have to negotiate if they're dealing with a non-Indigenous service.
Right. And your, uh, organisation has broad coverage across, uh, Queensland. And you've mentioned particularly Townsville Aboriginal and Islanders Health Service. Is it your experience that the extent to which the department, um, either uses or has, um, uh, ACCOs that are appropriate, available to it, varies from place to place?
Yes, it does, that's quite true. I mean, I think we're lucky to have TARS, but it has taken some time for TARS to be taking on that role because obviously that depends on the legislative framework. It also depends on the funding available to the organisation. Cairns also has Wuchopren, which is a similar service, which provides, you know, diverse services for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people.
Just so we get it for the record, what was the Cairns organisation you referred to?
That was Wuchopren, W-U-C-H-O-P-E-R-N, I hope I've got that right.
That's right. And now finally, in conclusion, I won't take you through them, but at paragraphs one hundred and twenty to one hundred and thirty-eight, you make a number of quite extensive recommendations for change. And is it the case that you would ask the commission to look at those recommendations in determining how it reports back in the commission's findings?
Yes, most certainly, very much. So I think the thing that's missing in the picture is the human rights framework and an understanding of how human rights works under the Human Rights Act in Queensland. I see it missing from the department, there's no overarching body that can assess whether the department is compliant with its human rights obligations. And there needs to be that in place for things to improve. There needs to be research around how compliant it is with human rights and how those things can be improved. And without that research and that overarching scrutiny, then my concern is that the changes will happen slowly. And, you know, people will still be struggling with the same issues.
Thank you. Chair, that's the evidence of Ms Pereira.
Thank you very much. I shall ask, Ms Pereira, I shall ask the commissioners if they have any questions they would like to put to you. Commissioner Mason?
No, thanks, Chair.
Commissioner Atkinson?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Ms Pereira, thank you very much for giving your evidence and your detailed statement, including your proposals, recommendations for change. We appreciate the thought and attention that has gone into your evidence, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Chair, could we request that the hearing adjourn to resume at one forty Brisbane time, two forty Sydney time, if that's convenient?
Yes, thank you, we'll adjourn to one forty Brisbane time, two forty Sydney time.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Miss Bennett, I think.
Thank you, Chair. I think that Mr Coots Trotter and Catherine, I'm sorry, I've lost the surname, are the next witnesses.
Alexandra, I think.
I'm sorry, Catherine Alexandra, Alexander, I'm sorry.
Trotter, Ms Ellie, thank you for coming to give evidence. You wouldn't mind following the instructions of Commissioner Atkinson's associate, who will administer the affirmations to you, thank you.
I will read you both the affirmation. At the end, please both say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. Just so you are aware of our setup, in this electronic age, we have Commissioners Mason and Atkinson, who are in the Brisbane Hearing Room of the Royal Commission. Commissioner McEwen and I are in the Sydney premises of the Royal Commission and Ms Bennett is in Melbourne. We hope it all goes well. What could possibly go wrong? Yeah, all right, yes, Miss Bennett.
Thank you, Chair. Now, Mr Coots Trotter, you've made two statements to the Royal Commission. The first is fifty-four pages and is dated the twenty-eighth of October, twenty twenty, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Yes, the commissioners will find that it's part D of the bundle, tab fifteen. Mr Coots Trotter, are the contents of that statement true and correct?
Yes, they are.
Yes, now you've made a second statement on the thirtieth of October, twenty twenty, and that is fifty-five pages long. Are the contents of that statement true and correct?
Yes, they are.
Chair, you'll find that behind tab sixteen. Those statements, I seek to tender, have marked as exhibit eight point one four. They are accompanied by annexes that are tabs seventeen to seventy-six in the commissioners' bundles. And I ask that they be marked as exhibits eight point one five, point one to eight point one.
Did you mean to mark both statements, sorry, did you mean to mark both statements as exhibits eight point one four?
Eight point one four, yes, thank you.
And so what are we doing with the exhibits to the statements?
Exhibits eight point one four point one to eight point four seven point seven six.
Right, so the exhibits to the statements will, eight point one four point one to eight point one four point seven six.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Now, Ms Alexander, you've made a statement of four pages. Is the contents of that statement true and correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, I tender that as, and seek that it be marked exhibit eight point one five.
Yes.
And I think there are a number of exhibits that are attached to that affidavit, which I would seek to have marked eight point one five point one, eight point five one point two.
I think you mean eight point one, one to eight.
Yes, thank you, Chair, thank you. We'll find that facility, thank you, Chair.
That can be done, yes.
Thank you. All right, Mr Coots Trotter, I wanted to ask you first about your position. Can you tell the commissioners what your role is within the state government in New South Wales?
Certainly, Ms Bennett. I'm the Secretary of the Department of Communities and Justice.
Yes, and how long have you held that role?
The department was created in May last year. And prior to that, I was the secretary or director general of the Department of Family and Community Services, appointed to that role in August two thirteen.
And Ms Alexander, what's your role within the New South Wales Government?
I'm the senior practitioner for the Department of Communities and Justice.
And how long have you held that role?
Since two thousand and thirteen.
Thank you. Now, Mr Coots Trotter, you obviously are at the apex of a significant department. You say in your statement at paragraph six, you identify the focus of your department, including the areas in which you seek to improve outcomes. At paragraph six H, you say you seek to improve outcomes for Aboriginal people who are overrepresented across all of our services. I just wanted to start by understanding what you mean by that. In which services do you understand First Nations people to be overrepresented?
Thank you, Ms Bennett. I'd just also just begin by acknowledging that my colleague and I are here on Gadigal land and pay our respects to Gadigal elders past and present and those of the Inuit nation. By that, Ms Bennett, we mean, I mean, that compared to Aboriginal people's share of the population in New South Wales, they are disproportionately represented in our child protection services, in our housing and homelessness services, in our youth justice services, in our adult correction services. That is not, not quite as true in disability services, but I think that it's a function of poor access to those services rather than need.
All right, we might return to that. Do you consider that overrepresentation to be problematic from your point of view?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And why is that?
Because to be represented in those services is a marker of disadvantage, often a marker of poverty, often a marker of poor mental health, often a marker of drug and alcohol use and abuse, and often a marker that you are a victim survivor of violence.
Now, Mr Coots Trotter, I had a discussion with your counterpart from Queensland yesterday about the notion of unconscious bias. Is that a concept that you're familiar with?
Yes.
Can you tell the commissioners what you understand by that term?
Applying to Child Protection, it describes predictable errors in decision-making that are driven by the way human beings approach decision-making, particularly when under pressure. So, for example, we know that we put more weight on the first thing we heard and the last thing we heard about family. We know that we are likely to put greater weight on information we hold and be less curious about information that is held by other agencies or by family. So there are a range of entirely predictable mistakes that can emerge in child protection decision-making that we have to guard against.
And do I understand from your evidence that it's a risk that arises in more, in faster decision-making? Decision-making that has to be made under time pressure?
Time pressure is one aspect of pressure. Probably more importantly is the risk that is felt by child protection practitioners when they are making decisions about children's safety and wellbeing. Child protection systems are characterised by fear, fear among staff and fear among the families that we work with.
All right. So how many staff roughly work in the front line of child protection in your agency?
We have two thousand three hundred and thirty-three child protection practitioners, caseworkers. We have a range of other staff who work in support of those professionals.
And how many of those two thousand three hundred and thirty-three are First Nations people?
Nine point three per cent of our child protection casework workforce identify as First Nations people when they are formally asked as part of the process of recording information with us as an employer. So that's their employment.
In child protection, First Nations people make up a higher percentage of your client base than that, don't they?
Significantly higher.
Yes. Are you taking steps to try to increase the representation of First Nations people among your caseworkers?
Yes, we are.
And what are those steps?
We, I'll example a few. We have Aboriginal cadetship programmes, we have internship programmes. We run very local recruitment campaigns through social media outlets, Aboriginal media outlets. We have a range of community elders and authority figures who are prepared to be a point of contact for First Nations applicants who are thinking about coming to work with the organisation. We use the workplace experience of Aboriginal colleagues in a range of social media materials. So there are a wide range of things that we seek to do to explain the nature of child protection work in the organisation and give Aboriginal people confidence about the kind of supports that they will enjoy if they come and work with us. I should also add.
Go ahead, if you want, please do.
Thank you, Ms Bennett. Commissioner, you raised a question yesterday about our Queensland colleagues and the requirement for applicants for child protection roles to hold tertiary qualifications. While we value tertiary qualifications, they are not required for Aboriginal applicants who come with a whole range of other capabilities that are entirely relevant to the work.
Mr Coots Trotter, you mentioned that the staff, as well as clients, operate in a climate of fear. What's the fear of staff?
The fear for staff is that they will do something or fail to do something that will in some way contribute to a child being seriously hurt or killed. That is a real fear for child protection practitioners that we have to recognise in our work and think about how we enable people to feel that the organisation is sharing that risk with them and enable them to lower levels of anxiety and make better decisions for children and families.
I imagine that a part of the fear, what happened, or something goes wrong with the spurs, maybe?
Indeed, Commissioner, there is a very famous case of a high-profile child death in England, Baby P. And following Baby P's death, there was a great deal of media coverage about the role of the child protection staff in that case. And the rate at which children came into care in England rose by fifty per cent following that. So that was a reaction of child protection staff to that fear, that sense of risk.
I don't think you have to go to England to see the responses of the media where child protection processes did apparently break down, do they?
No, indeed.
What about the other side of that fear equation, Mr Coots Trotter? What, is there fear on the part of the families when it comes to child protection involvement?
Yes, absolutely. We're still prescribed many other.
Sorry, it's a difficulty with the slight delay. What do you understand to be the nature of that fear that families feel in relation to child protection involvement?
They fear we will take their children for no good reason and they have historical grounds to hold that fear. Our organisation is still known by older Aboriginal people, particularly older Aboriginal women, as the welfare. And we have a history of implementing policies to remove Aboriginal children because they are Aboriginal. And that is lived history. So we have to understand that and we have to work very hard to assure people that our practice has changed.
All right, and in your statement, you talk about the ways in which your practices have changed. And you say that the latest data has shown, and I'm going to section paragraph fifty-three of your statement now, you say that the latest data has shown that thirty-three per cent fewer First Nations children entered out of home care in two thousand nineteen twenty compared to the twenty fifteen sixteen year. Now, you say, Mr Coots Trotter, that this demonstrates that the department is acting to address the overrepresentation of Aboriginal children in out-of-home care. That's your evidence, as I understand it, is that fair?
Yes, this is better.
And so you're extrapolating from the data at twenty fifteen sixteen showing a lower number of First Nations children in child protection at twenty nineteen twenty. You're noting the reduction and attributing that to successful interventions by your department for First Nations children. Is that your evidence?
My evidence is that as a result of working with Aboriginal communities and examining our own practice, we have changed our practice in ways that mean we are better able to work to support families, Aboriginal families, to enable our children to stay safe at home.
And so it's your understanding that First Nations representation has decreased over that time in the child protection system?
No. What I'm recording here is the number of children, of Aboriginal children, First Nations children, that we assumed into care. And that number has fallen year by year since two thousand and fifteen sixteen. But the total number of children assumed into care has also fallen. And for non-Aboriginal children, that reduction, some 42%, is a larger reduction than the reduction for Aboriginal children. So you asked about it. Yes.
Yes, as I understand it, and I think there's an infographic that shows this at document drc.0011.0006.001, that there's a 42% reduction in all children...
Do you want that brought up on the script? Do you want that brought up?
Oh, thank you. Yes, thank you, Commissioner.
I have faith in the operators. So as I understand it, the first dot point on the right-hand side says there's been a 42% reduction in all children and young people entering out-of-home care. That's what O O H C stands for in New South Wales. And then the second dot point tells us that there has been a less significant reduction for First Nations children and that that is at 35%. So there's been a 35% reduction over that period. Is that right?
And that, of course, refers to a period finishing in 2018-19. But yes, that's correct.
Okay, but what I'd like to understand from this graph, if the operator could return to the graph, is... First of all, let me test this with you, Mr. Koots Trotter. Does that suggest that whatever interventions you are doing to decrease entry to out-of-home care is working more for non-First Nations children than it is for First Nations children?
It's evident that it has had that effect. Understanding why it has had that effect is an open question. But I have an answer to that.
So it's not... Oh, well, okay. Let me just understand this graph as well. So we understand that the bar shows the total number of children entering out-of-home care, rather, in each year. So you'll see that the graph, the bar, reduces each year over the period that we're talking about. Now, the lower line, the orange line, shows First Nations children and the blue line, the top line, shows non-First Nations children. Now, those two lines are coming closer together. Is that your observation, Mr. Koots Trotter?
Yes.
So in the first bar, we have First Nations children are 1,408 out of the total of 3,886. Do you see that?
Yes.
And then the following year, they make up a greater proportion, which is now 1,133 from the total of 2,969. Do you see that?
Yes, I do.
So on my maths, we've gone from 36.5% of the total of First Nations children to now 38.2% of First Nations children. I won't ask you to do the maths on the run, but you agree based on the raw figures that that proportion is increasing?
Yes.
Now, as I see it, it dips the following year because the total number reduces significantly. So we're now down to 2,157 as the total number. But the number of First Nations children is 817. So that's a slight reduction as a total of the whole. Is that fair?
Yes.
And then the final year, we have this data for, it increases again. So now we have First Nations children who are 928 out of the 2,265, now making up 41% of the total population.
Yes.
So we go from 2015-16, they're 36.5%, to now being 41% of the total entering out-of-home care. I'd suggest to you, Mr. Trotter, that that is an upward trend of First Nations children entering out-of-home care.
Yes, of course. But of course, as far as those children's families, we are able to work more successfully with more families to enable more Aboriginal children to stay safely at home with family in. So your observation is absolutely correct and it's something that is concerned to us. But the overall trend is a reduction in the number of Indigenous children coming into care, which is reason for hope.
Yes, well, as a proportion of the whole entering care, it is increasing. And you'd agree with me that that is a matter of concern?
Yes.
Yes.
I think we can all agree that the percentage in 2015-16 was 36%. It's gone up to 41%. That's there, the maths, so let us proceed on that basis. I don't think we need to interrogate.
No, I was going to just... Mr. Koots Trotter, I think it's important, because my understanding of your evidence is that the 33% reduction of the total represents a successful implementation of First Nations policy. And I'd like to understand if that is as straightforward a proposition as it might appear. The second element to that really relates to the number of First Nations children in out-of-home care as a proportion of the total. Now, this is a different question. So I was asking you before about entry into out-of-home care. And I'd now like to just understand the population of children in out-of-home care.
Certainly.
Now, that, as I understand it, is also trending up. Is that your understanding?
Yes, it is. The overall population of children in care has fallen, but it has fallen again more markedly for non-Aboriginal children than it has for Aboriginal children.
Yes, and so does that suggest to you, Mr. Koots Trotter, that the interventions that you have put in place are working less effectively for First Nations children than they are for non-First Nations children?
It could. It could suggest that.
Yeah, and what is your department doing to understand whether that's the case or not?
So we have a range of evaluations underway of relatively recent interventions, new programs of one kind or another. And in every case, we are looking to understand whether the outcomes for Aboriginal children and families are different to those for non-Aboriginal children and families. And if possible, to draw some insights about why that might be the case.
And are you able to tell the Royal Commission about any of the insights that you have gleaned from your investigations to date about why this data is trending upward?
No, none of the evaluations are finalised yet, Miss Bennet, the ones that I'm referring to.
And when do you expect them to be finalised?
There are quite a number that will be finalised in the next 18 to 24 months.
All right, and in the meantime, is it your expectation that that upward trend will continue?
Based on what is now a trend over five years of an overall reduction in the number of children coming into care in New South Wales, a very significant reduction, but a more marked reduction among non-Aboriginal children. I would conclude, looking at that trend, that it is precisely that trend that is likely to continue, which means that this measure of overrepresentation needs to be further grappled with.
Yes, thank you. I had one further question that only tangentially relates to this 33% figure. And that is, there have been recent changes, as I understand it, to make it easier for permanent care arrangements to be put in place. Is that right?
Yeah. Just to clarify that, are you asking about guardianship or open adoption?
Yes. I'm asking about adoption and permanent care of children from the child protection system who leave out-of-home care for permanent placements with people who are not their family origin.
No, indeed. So in New South Wales, the policy and legislation establishes a hierarchy. The first objective of our work is to preserve children safely at home. Second, to, if they can't stay safely at home, to place them with extended family and then seek to restore them home. If that's not a feasible option, we would seek guardianship within their extended family. And then for non-Aboriginal children, we would seek open adoption. But for Aboriginal children, adoption is the least preferred permanency outcome. We would seek first to establish long-term foster care for Aboriginal children before we would consider open adoption.
Mr. Koots Trotter, can I ask, please, what are the drivers, in your view, of the reduction of children going into out-of-home care? The figures are quite striking on their face. A reduction from 3,700 or 800, depending upon my eyesight, down to 2,300 or thereabouts. What are the drivers?
Thank you, Commissioner. I think first and foremost is the establishment of our child protection practice framework in New South Wales. My colleague, Kate Alexander, has developed under her leadership, which has changed the culture of the organisation and changed the ways in which we make decisions affecting families. In the more recent period, there has been an expansion of evidence-based family support services that we have put in play in many parts of the state. And at the same time, I actually think the creation of a department that better integrates child protection with housing and particularly social housing and other forms of housing assistance has given us a few more ways in which we can provide families with a stable and safe home that is an absolutely necessary precondition for children to thrive.
So may we take it, then, that the reduction in the number of children going into out-of-home care reflects an increase in the number of children who have remained within their families who otherwise would have gone into out-of-home care? Is that your understanding of how this has worked out over the last four or five years?
That is absolutely correct, Commissioner, and the data demonstrates that year-on-year we are visiting more children and families. And yet, the rate at which those children come into care has fallen quite dramatically. So now, if we work with the family, the least likely thing we are going to do is bring a child into care.
And has there been any increase in the average duration of the time spent in out-of-home care for those children who are entering out-of-home care?
No, no, there hasn't been. And we would hope that the average duration of time that children spend in out-of-home care would actually reduce. One, because we know that restoration has to be pursued with urgency and successful restorations, 50% of successful restorations happen within the first 12 months. And we know we cannot leave children drifting in care. They need to have a permanency goal, a goal, a clear goal of a permanent, safe and loving family. And that needs to be established reasonably quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Koots Trotter, while we're talking about data, can I see if I understand some of the data capture processes within your department? I think you tell us that around paragraph 33, that when a profile is created for a person, it must specify whether the person identifies as First Nations. Is that right?
Can I just check the paragraph number, Miss Bennet?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's possibly less critical, but yes. Your first statement, I think?
Yes, thank you. Paragraph?
33.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And that's the way that First Nations status is captured by your department?
Yes.
Do you have any other inputs from any other departments around that question?
To establish Indigenous status, we would seek information from a range of sources, of course, first and foremost of a child's family or community or extended family, but also from information held by other government agencies, particularly our Department of Health, our Department of Education. In New South Wales, we exchange information under Section 16A of our Care and Protection Act.
And that includes as to First Nations status?
It does. It's a fundamentally important piece of information about a child and their family.
And so just so that I'm clear, if someone in the Department of Education enrolls a child and records their First Nations status, that will end up in your system?
We would be aware of that information and we would use it to seek clarification with the child, the young person or their family.
Yes, I understand that. Now, what about disability status? As I understand it, your statement at paragraph 39 tells us that that is an optional field when you are pre-antimatter profiled.
Yes, it is.
And so that can be left blank?
Yes, it can be.
And so do you keep reliable data about the disability status of children in your system?
No, I could not describe it as wholly reliable. And I would observe that we need to make that a mandatory aspect of identity that we record about someone or about a status that we record about someone.
And what about the parent? Is the same true of the parent for whom you make a profile in your system?
No, we have very inconsistent and therefore poor information about the disability status of parents.
And why, Mr. Koots Trotter, do you think it's important to have that information?
Because from a child protection perspective, there may be, particularly depending on the nature of disability, but obviously, as we've heard in evidence before the Commission, issues of communication and clarity and communication, sharing understanding are really important in child protection work. And it's something that's relevant to understanding the supports that a person needs in order to be a protective parent.
Well, I'd like to just ask you about those supports. What role does your department play in providing supports for parents with a disability that are engaged in your system?
Firstly, we should, in the language of the UN Convention, make a reasonable adjustment to enable a person with disability to fairly access our service. And that is often around communication, but not always around communication. And then our first aim, as I say, in child protection is to safely preserve children with their family. And if the family has one or more parents or parents with disability and that disability in some way affects their parenting, that is something we need to know and understand so that we can think about the kinds of supports that can be made available either from universal service systems or from services that we fund to provide those kinds of supports.
Now, I'm interested that you use the phrase reasonable adjustment. That's language from the Disability Discrimination Act. Does your department understand that, operate on the basis that it is bound by that act in its interactions with parents?
We completely accept the concept, but the language used in our materials, and I think the Commission has some pendent in evidence. For example, our Practice Guidance on Working with Parents with Disability doesn't use that language, but it speaks to exactly the same concept, which is not to make assumptions about a person's disability, not to make assumptions about how they think about it or how it affects them in their experience. assumptions about how they think about it or how it affects them in their experience or in their capacities or abilities, but rather to be curious and ask questions about that. But that guidance to our caseworkers does explicitly call out the need to ensure that our communication is clear and understood. And obviously, when we're working with families, as you have heard, there is often very heightened anxiety on behalf of the parents we're working with. So that of itself means that communication has to be very purposeful.
And that anxiety is likely to be heightened among a First Nations population with the history of dispossession that you described at the start of your evidence. Is that fair?
Yes, absolutely.
And so the confluence of those two factors, is that something that your officers take into account?
I would hope that they would, and the leadership of the senior practitioner, the training and support materials, the methods by which we make decisions, all seek to ensure that that interaction is understood. And I don't want to approach it as a deficit, but often the interaction between indigeneity and disability is something that presents as an impediment or a challenge to people.
Well, is there a tension between the decision-making process in child protection which identifies mental health problems as triggers for potential risk and that attitude?
Not when the practice is well-delivered, no, I don't think so.
All right, well, I'd like to ask you a little bit about that. At paragraph 66 of your statement, you talk about risk factors that are taken into account in decision-making.
Yes.
So you say, during screening of concerns reported to Protection Helpline, Child Protection Helpline, questions are asked about parental risk factors. Now, just to pause there for a moment, Mr. Koots-Trotter, I want to place this in context. As I understand it, this is at screening stage, so no notification has yet been substantiated? This is a call-in to the department to raise a concern. Is that fair?
Yes.
And it can come from anyone. It can come from a neighbour, a police officer, a teacher, someone at the local hospital. Is that right?
The 75% of our reports come from police, education and health, and indeed, sometimes our own.
So was there anyone in that list that I just rattled off that could not make a notification of this kind?
No, anyone can make a notification.
Anyone. So I understand. And the person who takes the screening call, as I understand your evidence at paragraph 66, the Child Protection Helpline will ask questions about parental risk factors, and the first one you identify is a mental health problem or a diagnosed mental illness that interferes with their daily functioning. Now, Mr. Koots-Trotter, what is the difference between a mental health problem and a diagnosed mental illness?
I might refer to my colleague, Kate Alexander. My assumption is that a diagnosis will be information we can confirm from, for example, health that confirms the diagnosis. A mental health problem might be an assessment of a mandatory report, so it's not confirmed in information that we are able to source from the Dunbar Health.
Is it a tentative conclusion or does it range beyond what could be a mental illness? So let me put that another way. Depression is a recognised mental illness and it can be diagnosed, that's right?
Yes.
Yes. Does mental health problem refer to a suspicion that someone has depression or does it refer to an undefined other kind of mental health problem?
Mike, if you don't mind, Ms. Bennet, I'm not sure, so I would turn to my colleague, Kate Alexander, if that's appropriate.
Certainly. The thing that's very important for our workers when they are assessing risk and safety to children is they rely on very firm. And the SGM manuals that you referred to yesterday do have very clear definitions about mental health. And what they encourage our workers to do very clearly states that if a primary carer has never been diagnosed but appears to have or have had a mental health problem, consider obtaining an assessment prior to scoring. So it's very important that our workers rely on definitions in practice when they're applying these tools. If a parent themselves tells them they've had a mental health problem or if our records in the past indicate knowledge of that, that we would encourage our workers not to score that as a mental health problem, but to seek a professional assessment.
Well, my question though is, what is a mental health problem?
So if we, I'm referring to the SGM manual that's in our evidence.
There are four annexed to the statement, you might need to be more specific.
Okay, so at the moment, I'm referring to Safety Risk and Risk Reassessment 1.
Okay, well, that is in a different folder.
I apologize.
Well, why do you take me to the definition of mental health problem?
Okay, so it's at N7, and it asks our workforce to mark if a professional, primary parent, carer, mental health, a professional qualified to do so has diagnosed the primary carer with a mental health condition other than substance-related disorders, or the primary parent has had multiple reports for mental health psychological evaluations, treatment or hospitalisations.
So, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I still don't know if a mental health problem is something that must be capable of diagnosis or if it's something else.
It's something we're encouraging people not, we do not want child protection workers putting a label on parents as having a mental health problem, but that is what we're working against them doing.
Isn't that what you're doing? You're making the identification of a mental health problem the trigger for consideration of that person's parenting capacity, aren't you?
In the safety assessment tool, mental health is one of the dangers that would be, that we would ask people to consider. And that is because of, that is because of the evidence behind that tool. And so our workforce would be asked to consider whether there was a mental health problem. And what I'm saying is that we are really encouraging that they do not have the qualifications to diagnose or label a parent as having a mental health problem themselves.
Ms. Bennet, I wonder if you wouldn't mind, either you or Ms. Alexander, identifying the document that you're talking about. I'm trying to find at the moment, I'm having some difficulty.
I'm having the same difficulty, Chair, perhaps. There should be a document ID on the top right-hand corner of the document that you're looking at.
Well, what's the title of the document?
It's the document, Ms. Bennet, that you referred to yesterday. It's the Structure of Decision Making, Safety Risk and Risk Reassessment Policy and Procedures Manual, August 2012.
They are different versions of a similar tool, so they're not identical documents. I'll just, in fact, Chair, it might be a convenient time in any event to have a 10-minute break for after.
We have got a number here, if that helps.
I'll just, if that's a convenient time, Chair, perhaps we could have a 10-minute break and I'll organise the documents.
Are we talking about the Policy and Procedures Manual Restoration or talking about...
Not restoration, safety risk and risk reassessment. We do have a number, if that would help.
Yeah, please give us the number, that might help.
0030 0015 001.
Bennet, if you want to have a short break in order to locate the document, we can do that.
Thank you, Chair, and that would be convenient if 10 minutes were appropriate?
Not especially, but we'll do it anyway. All right, we'll take a 10-minute.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Ms. Bennet.
I understood Commissioner Atkinson had a question, Chair.
Yes.
And particularly, Mr. Koots-Trotter, is this. You mentioned at the beginning of your evidence fear, and we talked a little about the fear that's felt by child protection workers because of the fear of a child being harmed or dying. And we also talked about the political and media consequences of that. But I want to just ask you about the other fear, the fear of parents. I spent 20 years until very recently as a judge in the Supreme Court of Queensland, and I sat on a number of trials and sentencing hearings where a child had died because of the act of a parent or neglect to seek treatment by a parent. Almost invariably, and I can't think of a single case where this wasn't true, that parent had articulated that fear of having the child removed was the reason, or a reason, a significant reason, why that parent had not sought treatment or assistance for that child. This, of course, is exacerbated when there's more than one reason to fear. For example, the parent has First Nations status or has a disability such as a psychosocial disability. So what steps has your department taken to deal with that fear held by parents? You talked about the justified fear felt by First Nations people because of policies of child removal in the past, but I'm talking about a fear that's felt and articulated in this day and age by parents who fear having their child removed, and even when it has consequences that the child has died.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think our response to that is to deliver our child protection practice in the ways that we plan to, and that involves open and respectful communication with parents and an appreciation that there are a whole range of fears that they may hold about our involvement, and for us to be honest about that and to plan our interactions with families with that in mind.
Then...
Sorry, we didn't hear that question.
I said, is that the extent of it?
Well, the nature of...
Look, it's an excellent question, Commissioner, and if you like, it's probably the biggest challenge facing Child Protection Services. We know that if we are going to do our job of keeping children safe, we need to work with their parents, and we need to do everything we can to help parents trust and confide in assistance, because the more information we can gather from parents, the better job we can do of assessing safety. Simply, we've done it in three ways. We've tried to impact on the culture of practice, we've changed the structures around the practice and the way it's delivered, and we've done everything we can to increase the skills of our workforce. So when I talk about culture, I'm talking about the way families are talked about, understood in an office, how practice thrives in an office. We have 80 offices across New South Wales, and how we get out to those offices and help them keep the culture of practice alive is really important. With such a diverse workforce, what we did is we brought in a practice framework with principles to unite the culture of our workforce. We've had many, many years of a lot of rules and tools and policies that weren't doing the trick, but we went for principles, and the first principle is one that acknowledges that culture is ever-present, and it really pushes our workforce to understand the impact of the stolen generation and lead with that in their thinking always when they're Aboriginal families. So that's an example of culture through how we've changed our practice culture through our principles. There's other, we've changed the language, we've got rid of alienating language, acronyms and jargon that distance us from the families that we worked with, protected us and not children. We've pushed very hard to change our relationship focus. We know across all child protection evidence, the single most important ingredient to keep individuals safe is the quality of relationship formed between the worker and the family, way and above the rules and the tools. So we've worked to impact on the relationships, we've worked to bring in what we call a culture of critique, where we are very good at looking at the impact of our own practice, and we're really pushing our workforce to think about the impact of the power that they hold and how they use their power. We drill that into our staff in their first week. Their first week in the caseworker development course is a week about human rights, and in that very first week, we ask them to talk about their own personal biases and assumptions that they're moving into the work. And our last principle, the fifth principle, is about ethics and how ethics and values are incredibly important to our work. And ethics in its shade of grays is something we're encouraging our staff to talk about all the time. So it's putting themselves in shoes of families and seeing the first knock on the door as the job to open the door to come back a second. And that's about upholding people's dignity and working with compassion and curiosity, and it's incredibly important. We do that given the past legacy of our system and the very real fear you talk about. The issue about skills is really important because when Michael spoke earlier about an anxious child protection workforce, we know the anxiety of workforce is heightened when people aren't skilled. They're more likely to react with anxiety towards a parent who might be very angry with us because they're frightened, because they don't want to work with us. And what can happen is a parent's fear will manifest in a way that may come across as angry, and our workforce might then react with anxiety in response to that. And we know that taps into an unconscious bias, that workers who feel anxious will attribute there's a level of danger to the child that may or may not exist. So the more skillful our people, the more we can increase skills, the better we will be at decreasing it. So skill development means that in their 17-week caseworker development course, they have to do role plays, they have to have their practice watched, they have to get very good at coping with people who are upset or frightened, and they are really forced to put themselves in those shoes, in the people they're working with. The last thing just quickly to talk about is the structures we've put around practice. So there is group supervision. No longer in New South Wales do we make decisions about children that change the course of their lives, no longer do we make those decisions in isolation. Decisions are made in group with other professionals present, and we have a very structured way of using groups. We also have raised the delegation of removal decisions for Aboriginal children, so Aboriginal children cannot be assumed in care without the approval of a senior leader in the group, what we call our Director Committee, the highest child protection leader for the group. But that's just an example of the structures we've put around our decision-making that we think are very important addressing your point about.
Have you been able to evaluate whether or not this has made a difference to the fear felt by parents?
Certainly. We've done an evaluation of the early implementation of our practice framework, and the evaluation that we're just starting now, our midterm evaluation, includes seeking perspectives of children and parents. It matters that we ask them how they experience our practice and that we listen to them. So that's what our current evaluation is doing.
Question is underway but not yet complete.
No.
Is that right?
No, we did do an early evaluation of the framework, which has shown some very positive results. The issue is, as Michael referred to, the framework... The issue is, as Michael referred to, the framework is one part of our reform. So it's, some of the results could be to do with other things we've done in concert with it, like the introduction of family group conferencing, like the permanency programme, the permanency support workers we've put in place. There's been a host of reforms over the last five years, so it's sometimes difficult to piece out which bit might be leading to success. But certainly the early indicators are the framework is making a difference in practice.
Sorry, my question very specifically was, have you done an evaluation of the effect on parents of fear of the department?
No.
No.
Right, I thought it was important because it was one of the first things that Mr. Koots-Trotter mentioned, so would you intend to evaluate that?
Yes, I think that the way we will do that, through our evaluation of the framework and through the application of our practice standards, is that they prompt our staff to ask parents and children for feedback all the way along. And that questions about, is there things we can do differently? How do you find, what's it like for you when we work with you? Do you feel heard by us? Do you understand why we've come to visit you today? We've built all of those questions into our standards. So that's evaluation at a very local level that guides a practitioner daily. The evaluation of the framework, I mentioned before, we will be asking parents how they experience us and whether they experience fear or anxiety working with us would be a part of it.
All right, but I think I'm talking about people who fear coming into contact with child welfare. They're not actually people you have come in contact with. You don't have any public programmes to deal with that kind of fear, which, in my experience, has led to the death of children.
I suppose what I'd say about that is, the more confident the sector holds us in, the more likely they are to encourage families to work with us. And the more confident we are at working with the sector and working with advocates, I think the better we'll do on that subject of getting those people who are afraid of us.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Miss Bennet, for allowing me that opportunity to ask those questions, something has concerned me for some years. Thank you.
Very pleased, Commissioner. Now, you were just speaking just a moment ago, before we return to structured decision-making. You were talking about your workforce, and I just wanted to pick up on something that you said there. That your workforce go through a seventeen-week training programme, that's right?
Yes.
Yes. What's your turnover like of staff?
The memory, Miss Bennet, the turnover of our child protection staff currently running at about eleven percent each year.
And is that, so one in ten resign each year, or you add one in ten people?
So on average, a person will spend nine years with us before leaving.
I see. And when did you commence your seventeen-week training programme?
We've been running that training programme for years, but on the twentieth of July this year, we commenced a brand-new one, we completely overhaul the programme.
I see, so at this stage, that's still in the process of working through your workforce?
Yes, we start a course every second week.
I see, okay. Now, we were discussing one of the structured decision-making tools, and I was asking you about the question of mental health or mental health problems. And if the operator could find nsw dot zero zero three zero 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 one five dot zero zero four two, I think that's the part of the tool that you were going to. Now, if I could ask the operator to highlight N seven, that shows, now as I understand it, this part directs the decision-maker to mark the one if either there has been a diagnosis, which is tab one, bullet point one, and I take it the second bullet point is an or, that is, an alternative is, there have been multiple reports for mental health, psychological evaluations, treatment or hospitalisations. And it follows to explain that if the primary parent or carer has never been diagnosed but appears to have or have had a mental health problem, consider obtaining an assessment prior to scoring. And then this warning, do not count reports motivated solely by efforts to undermine the credibility of primary carer or parent or other ulterior motives. So is it fair to say that a person can score a one on that measure without a mental health diagnosis and without an assessment?
I would hope not.
Yes, but my question to you is a little bit more specific than that. It is, it would be permitted by this direction to mark with a one without a diagnosis or an assessment, is that right?
So when you're referring to where you mark one, you're referring in the same document, the page thirty-six, which is our risk assessment?
So if the operator could show is nsw dot zero zero three zero dot zero zero one five dot zero zero three eight?
And this is at N seven?
Yes. So this is the heading for neglect, this is an assessment of abuse or neglect, and you'll score a one if there are past or current problems, and you will score a zero if there are no problems. Now, that's what your decision-maker is confronted with. They read that entry in combination with the direction that we were just considering. And as I understand it, your decision-maker would be free to mark a one in the absence of a diagnosis, is that right?
No. What's very important is the stage of the assessment we're referring to here. So this process we're following now is at the risk assessment stage. So that is the third stage in our process of assessing safety. And that's important in how this information is gathered because in the progression, they would have been assessed by a different tool at the helpline. It would have been allocated to a local office, and a safety assessment would have first been conducted. The safety assessment determines dangers and protective capacities, and if needed, in this instance, a risk assessment would follow. But this is at the point of working with a family that would be about thirty days down the track of our involvement with the family, at which point we should know a lot of information. What we would ask our workers to do is to apply the definition. So when they fill in N seven, they are in practice, they look at their definitions, and they would come to N seven definition. And the definition says that a professional is qualified, has diagnosed, or the parent themselves has had multiple mental health, and they're encouraged to speak before scoring. And that's really important that they do that.
Well, it says, just to come back to the wording, they're to consider an assessment if the person is not diagnosed. They're not required to undertake one, are they?
They could score it, they could score that, but at that point in our process, with all of the supports around the inter case discussions and the seeking information through subside bodies, they really would have the information at hand.
Just to repeat, just so I understand your evidence, they score it a one?
They could score it a one without a diagnosis, but it is, there's a lot of prompts in the system that would tell them not to.
Okay, I haven't seen anything that tells someone not to score someone without a diagnosis. Can you take me to where it says do not score without a diagnosis?
Yes, I'm just finding there's a sentence that says, do not score these unless you've had an assessment, but I've just got to find that sentence. It's not jumping out at me, I know the sentence.
Well, perhaps you can take that on notice.
We have, Miss Bennet, can we just make sure we're having one person speak at a time, and so it may be better to allow the witness to finish and then you come in.
Please, Chair. Are you content to take that question on notice?
I am. I just, it might be helpful if I could offer a quick example here. What is commonly the case is we may receive reports where people who are not qualified to do so will tell us that, they might say, for instance, the mother has a mental health problem. A school teacher might tell us that. And in the first stage of assessment, at the point of screening, which is, that is just an allegation-based tool, we would record the teacher's concerns about a mental health problem. When we go to these stages we're talking about now, risk assessment, our job is to not rely on what other people tell us how to define, but to substantiate it through use of other professionals. And I can reassure you that with all the work that goes around planning before they go out, our staff are very, very familiar with seeking assessments of qualified professionals.
All right, well, we'll await your response on notice. Would you agree with me that these tools treat mental illness as a risk factor, albeit in combination with other matters?
Yes.
And is there a potential for stigmatization of people with mental health difficulties?
Yes.
And what do you do to counter that potential stigma?
A lot of the things that I referred to earlier in our training and in our practice framework and principles, the other point that is very important with our responsibility to protect children is that we're constantly asking our workforce to understand what is the child's experience. So if we are worried about a parent's mental health, our worries will be about how it impacts on the child. We will do what we can to overcome stigma of the parents by doing everything we could to engage, support people for them, and to talk with them and their support people openly about the best ways to work with their family and the best ways to understand their condition. But our primary focus would be the impact on the child.
All right, now, Mr. Koots-Trotter, I'd like to ask you about the Family's Culture Report, which was provided in 2019. You refer to it at paragraph twenty-one of your statement. Am I right to characterize that as a significant and recent review of First Nations children in out-of-home care?
The report was delivered recently, it's a significant review. It is a review of practice by and large in the 2015-2016 financial year. It's a focus on over a thousand Aboriginal children that went into care in that year.
Yes. Now, we've today been provided with an interim report from your government as to the status of its implementation, and I want to see if I understand that status. Your government has, or your department, has not accepted all the recommendations of that report, is that right?
It's the government position, Miss Bennet, yes, that is correct.
All right, so you have, as I understand it, there are twenty-four recommendations that have not been accepted from that report, is that right?
I would have to confirm that. I would need to confirm that on notice, please.
Do you otherwise accept findings and recommendations of that report?
Yes, the government's position in relation to them is set out both in my second statement and in the publication to which you refer.
As I understand, that report recommends a number of amendments to the Child and Young Persons Care and Protection Act.
Yes, it does.
And is it correct to understand that those recommendations will not be considered until 2023, 2024?
Yes, that is correct.
Is there any reason they can't be considered now?
The view of the government was that there were significant amendments made to the Care and Protection Act very recently, and the government wanted to see the impact that those changes had before considering further major reviews to that question.
Were those amendments directed to the care and protection of First Nations children?
They were directed to the care and protection of all children, but I'm sorry, I'm just trying to remember whether there were any amendments that were particularly focused on First Nations children. I don't think so, I think they were general amendments affecting all children.
And the Family and Culture Report is specifically concerned with issues that directly affect First Nations children in the child protection area, is that right?
Yes, it is.
And so why not at least consider the amendments that are being proposed by that report?
As I say, Miss Bennet, the government took a major package of reforms through the Parliament and felt that it wanted to see the impact of those changes and changes in policy and practice in our agency before revisiting a major reform of the legislation, but it has given an undertaking to review the legislation on that timeframe.
So those recommendations, will they be considered afresh in the three or four years, or will there be a fresh review then?
No, they will be, they will be considered as part of a review of the legislation at that point. But all of the explicit recommendations that the government is not rejecting in relation to those sort of change will be part of that review.
I see. Can I ask the operator to show you nsw dot zero zero three zero dot zero zero six dot zero zero one? This is an Aboriginal cultural capability framework that you refer to in your statement, Mr. Koots-Trotter, the first statement at paragraph seventeen.
Yes.
As I understand it, this is a document that is guiding your department's movement towards better First Nations cultural capability, is that a fair description?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Yes, and it's marked 2017 to 2021, so I take it it's a process that's going on in that period, and that that's the period across which you expect this framework to be taking effect?
Yes.
And here are the key domains, five domains down the left-hand side, leadership, accountability, practice, relationships and workforce. And for each of those domains, we identify across the top an emerging cultural awareness, developing capability and proficiency. So am I to understand that cultural awareness is where your department is understood to be beginning the process in 2017, and proficiency where it seeks to end up by the end of the process, is that right?
That would be our ambition, yes.
And is this a process that you measure and test as you go? So for example, with leadership, let's start with accountability, which is the second box down. It asks that leaders are aware of the importance of reporting to the Aboriginal community about the departments. about the department's performance. Are you able to, have you measured whether you are complying or if you're proficient or, or emerging or developing in relation to that particular issue?
Uh, Ms Bennet, when we began the process, we had, uh, executive leaders, uh, self-assess where they thought they and their function was against these levels of competence. And we will certainly, at, at the very least, um, undertake that process of assessment again. But there are some very specific things that have flowed from this that are, um, very quantifiable, that we would, um, include in the process of assessment. And obviously, most importantly, we need to think about how we can seek the views of Aboriginal children, families, communities and our Aboriginal colleagues in the department.
And so is it a document against which you measure your, um, progress?
It's a framework within which we measure our progress, yes.
And, and so have you actually carried out any measures against this framework since 2017?
Uh, we have and do regularly survey, um, Aboriginal staff, which is, um, it, it's a structured survey, but it also includes the opportunity to provide commentary about their experience of the workplace. And, uh, late last year, over the course of a number of months, we, um, engaged with around 3,000 people in the organisation, including Aboriginal staff, to, um, assess our progress against some of these domains. And of course, we've been re, structurally changed so that the, the scope of the department now includes a whole range of other functions, particularly justice system functions, youth justice and corrections. And so we have established, um, a group of leaders across the, the whole of the organisation to revisit this and think about its application to the whole of the department against, um, um, important measures of outcome that we seek with and for Aboriginal communities. So the, the closing...
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I, I just wonder if perhaps I need to be clearer. As I understand this document, it, it applies to your workforce.
Yes.
And it is a guide for your workforce to move towards being better leaders, more accountable and more culturally capable in the work that they do, particularly as it relates to First Nations people?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
And so with accountability, where are, where is your department at the moment as against those four measures up on the screen?
We are, um, sorry, can you, can you explain what you mean by that?
Well, as I understand it, you've ident...
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Yes, I understand.
Yes. So when you have proficient accountability, you'll be held accountable through governance and contractual requirements and engaged with Aboriginal community members about the department's performance and improving outcomes for Aboriginal clients through targeted Aboriginal programmes and services, as opposed to the emerging status. So where are, where is your department on accountability at the moment?
Oh, uh, it's developing at best.
Yes, okay. And, uh, is that the result of a review? Have you actually, do you measure yourself against this?
No, that's my, that's my assessment as the Secretary of the Department.
Yes. And so, um, what are the steps you need to take to move from developing to capable to proficient?
Uh, in the child protection, uh, sphere, uh, implementing the Aboriginal case management policy, further improving, uh, Aboriginal education, uh, employment strategy, are the two, are, are two key measures. But they are, they are focused on governance of, of process. Um, the, the, um, there are a range of recommendations coming out of the Family's Culture review that go to the department's accountability. Some of those are, as you mentioned, bound up in proposed legislative reforms. And of course, there's been a significant appointment, creation of a deputy, uh, children's guardian with responsibility for Aboriginal children and families with a specific, uh, role as a statutory, as a, as a regulator of our department's holistic plan. But there, there are a number of things that are happening, but the Aboriginal case management policy being implemented in our districts is probably our next significant step of accountability to Aboriginal people in the community.
And so that's the document that, um, do you consult that document from time to time?
Uh, that document was created by ABSEC, the recognised, uh, peak for Aboriginal child and family organisations in New South Wales. And we continue to work with ABSEC to plan for its implementation within each of our 15 districts.
Fair to say, ABSEC was, uh, not happy with the, what my understanding is, ABSEC were not happy with the initial response to, uh, the Family and Culture Report. Is that correct?
Uh, look, I, I, that would be my view, but of course you, you have, um, Donna Clark as a witness for board of commissioners, so I should let her speak for herself.
Yes. Uh, and is that a matter of concern to you?
Um, I, I would, yes, I would much prefer a, um, a, a closer relationship with, um, Aboriginal peak organisations. And that, that is our objective. We would, we would like to strengthen, further strengthen those relationships.
All right. I'd like to ask you a little bit about, um, disability supports available to people in contact with your system. Because I think it's important to understand exactly the way in which they are, um, provided. Do you, what's the, does your department involve itself with the provision of supports to children in care where they need it because of their disability?
No, we would, um, fund those supports under contract with non-government partners. Uh, although there could be specific examples within families where we are, through our child protection function, working with a family and a family we're working with may need as part of a family action plan to have a vehicle modified to allow the family to transport children with disability to health services or education. So that there are specific small-scale examples like that. But in terms of, um, sort of more rounded disability service provision, we would be, um, we would be funding non-government organisations to provide that.
And, and do you work at the Office of the Senior Practitioner in relation to these issues? I think you address this at paragraph 26 of your statement.
So there, there is the question of building the capability of our workforce to, um, understand and know where to go for specialist advice or specific health services for a child or parent with disability. Um, we have a function inside our department called the Engagement and Families Support Team that is very focused on building the capability of our child protection workforce to help children in care who need access to the NDIS or whose NDIS package is not, not meeting their needs or has not been effectively utilised. So there's, there's a lot of work at the moment to build the capability of our child protection practitioners, um, to enable and better support children with disability in care or in contact with the child protection system to be effectively referred into the National Disability Insurance scheme.
And where a parent...
No, you, you go, Ms Bennet, sorry.
Oh, sorry, who I interrupted again? Um, where a parent has a disability that interferes with their parenting, is your office involved in providing them with supports to return them to, uh, the capacity to parent their, their children?
Yes, um, we would, um, if, if, if the primary goal is usually to safely preserve a child in their family, if a, if a parent's disability is in some way affecting, affecting their functioning in a way that, um, affects their ability to protect safely, safely parent their children, then we would be looking for services and supports that could support the parent to build skills, um, uh, or, or have other supports that enable them to, um, effectively parent their children.
One of the witnesses, Professor Higgins, I think, uh, Mr Higgins, I think, um, I called the kinds of interventions provided in this context tertiary interventions. He said that they are provided at that point. Would you agree with that assessment? Are you providing tertiary interventions?
If we are, if it's a sharp statutory child protection workforce involved and we have an open case with the family in, in our, in our language, yes, that's tertiary intervention. Um, but we fund a range, 550 non-government organisations through our targeted early intervention programme that provides parenting supports, community centres, uh, community transport, a whole range of things that support, uh, children and families, including children and families with disability, um, to, um, to, you know, more, more greatly participate in their local community and be more effectively supported. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't require a report to our child protection helpline screened in at risk of significant harm for people to access those services. They are available to the community without, without reference from us.
So there's, um, early intervention supports available before being screened into the department, i- into child protection. Is that right?
There is, and there are very, there are particular channels within health education particularly where they have, uh, child wellbeing units, which are a source of advice for teachers or health professionals who may have a concern about a child's safety or welfare. And their task is to, uh, essentially, uh, triage those concerns, see if they meet the statutory threshold or not. And if they don't, think about how within the healthcare system or the school system, some of the teacher or health or nurse or clinician's concerns can be met within those universal service systems.
And are those services talking to each other about the supports that this parent or this family needs?
Uh, yes, although there's room for improvement there.
Where is the room for improvement then?
The, the room for improvement is understanding, um, the context within which someone who's presenting with poor mental health, uh, understanding the context for the rest of their, of, uh, their life. So, um, it, it, it can be the case that healthcare systems view people as patients. They don't view them as parents as well. And of course, if they view them as parents as well, they're thinking about the impact of someone's, uh, poor mental health on their functioning as a parent. And they will be, uh, thinking about other services or agencies that they may need to engage to enable that person to achieve both a good health, mental health recovery, but also have issues dealt with that, that affect other members of the household or the family.
And is it the case that there are some supports that are only available after a family is screened into the child protection system?
Yes, yes. Uh, uh, more intent, more, more intensive, uh, family support, uh, services, particularly, uh, uh, clinical responses, for example, modus systemic therapy or, or family functional therapy.
Um, in the opening, we heard from Grandmothers Against Removal, who said that once into the system, it's, uh, that they characterise it as a gate that only swings one way. It is, once you're in the system, it's hard to get out. Is that, is that right? As far as you would understand it?
Um, no, because, um, during the course of the year, we work with and then stop working with thousands of families who establish some goals for change within their family. They achieve those goals and we no longer have any good reason to be involved in the family. So, um, that is, that is actually the experience of the majority of people with whom we work. Um, as I say, the least likely response now from us is to assume the child into care.
Is it, I, I mean, within the child protection system, not necessarily removal? I mean, once you're in the system and being monitored by your officers, is it, is it difficult to, um, step away from it, sorry?
I'm not sure how to answer that. I mean, it, it, we have a very, a very well-defined statutory role. Uh, it's clear when it starts and it's clear when it finishes. But what you are describing are the compounding effects of intergenerational trauma, poverty, mental health, drug and alcohol, family violence. So, um, that they, they can be disadvantages that are difficult to change. And so we, we do see, uh, 38% of children reported to us and to be at risk of significant harm with whom we work are re-reported in the following year. That is actually one of the key measures we use to determine whether our interventions are having any impact in enabling families to deal with the factors that create risks for children.
Because what, isn't it the case that once you've, you're in the system for one purpose, you're at risk of, of, um, further scrutiny and further issues being brought to the attention of the department?
To the extent that you may have a family support service working with you in your home four days a week while you work to build, um, aspects of your parenting, yes, there's a degree of scrutiny there. It comes with that support and contact. But our aim, of course, is to enable people to live their own lives free of our involvement. And that's our primary objective.
It really comes back to the fear point that I think you identified at the very beginning, doesn't it? That people don't necessarily perceive that supervision as benign, do they?
No, that's, that's absolutely correct.
Yes. And, and that's, you're working on how to change that understanding in the community?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, those are the matters, Chair. Um, I note the time and those are the matters that I sought to take Mr Koots-Trotter to specifically today.
Yes, thank you very much. Commissioner Mason, do you have any questions?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I, I did have, I, I was forming a question around, uh, family support services. Um, but I think that answer's been given, uh, in the last few minutes. I'm really interested in this, uh, guest division of effort at the primary prevention area and the tertiary area. And, uh, when, uh, family support services are done at the tertiary levels, uh, level, uh, how that, uh, still has a level of, I'd use the word stigma, or challenge within families. And at the primary level, uh, the effort particularly by First Nations organisations, uh, community-controlled, member-led organisations in providing primary support, uh, targeted interventions, uh, a significant intervention and investment for families would find themselves and individuals would find themselves, coming into contact with the child protection system. But I think, I think that you covered that quite well, um, a few minutes ago in your, in your response, that, 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 that it's necessary in both places, actually. Um, and if it's needed, it's needed because the goal is to... And if it's needed, it's needed, because the goal is to reunify families. Thank you.
Commissioner Atkinson?
No, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner McPhee?
Thank you. I have one question, a two-part question. The first part is, what percentage of your staff who work in child protection have a disability? And the second part is, what qualifications are they required to have to be caseworkers? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. The proportion of our staff who identify as people with disabilities is three point, three point five per cent in the most recent period. I will take on notice the proportion of staff working in child protection and report that too, but it would be less than that. I know that to be the case, but I don't have a figure in front of me. In terms of qualifications, I might invite my colleague, Kato Alexander, to describe the qualifications.
So we have a broad entry gates into our system. The most common qualifications are very similar to Queensland yesterday, the social science and social work psychology degrees. We also accept people with four-year bachelor qualification within backgrounds like teaching or nursing or policing.
Thank you. I noticed taking that on notice, the actual percentage, just for now, if say three point five per cent is, say, the current percentage, and given the large number of people, you know, people who you are interacting with who have a disability, is it fair to say that you think that percentage is very low when it comes to our requirement that people, staff, have an understanding of, you know, the issues that your clients are dealing with?
Yes, it is. We have a target to increase the proportion of our staff who identify as people with disability to five point six per cent by twenty twenty-five. But we need to give great attention to those areas of our organisation that are closest to providing services day to day to people with disability, and that's child protection and housing and housing assistance. But I would agree with you that it's too low.
Thank you. No greater question. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I think it was Professor Higgins who suggested that there was a fundamental incompatibility between the departmental function of maintaining a child protection system in the interest of preserving the safety and wellbeing of a child through intervention and the provision of support and assistance in order to prevent a child being brought within the system. I don't know whether you followed that evidence, but is there such an incompatibility? And if there is, how do you deal with it?
I will offer a view, and I'll invite my colleague to offer a view. I think there is the potential of an incompatibility. And I think, as we've discussed the course of the afternoon, that is often about how we are viewed by the people we seek to serve. In other words, that they won't ask for help or seek help with us, or fear we will hurt their children, improve them. I think we are turning around that perception, and I think there's nothing inherent in our function as a child protection organisation that has first objective, keeping kids safely at home, with an organisation that funds and provides support. So I think there is, there are issues we need to deal with, and we need to recognise them honestly, but I don't think there's a fundamental incompatibility. The only other thing I'd add, though, is that we do need to significantly increase the proportion of primary or secondary services provided by Aboriginal controlled organisations. There's absolutely no doubt of that.
Yes, thank you.
I absolutely agree with Michael, and it really is to do with a lot of the points that have been made already this afternoon about the fear of families in working with us. One of the most important skills of a child protection worker is the skills to work with families and groups. And what that means is to bring in support people and advocates and people who can walk alongside families to help lower the risk that's not dependent on us having that relationship. That enables us to work with other families and make best use of our resources. But it also enables families trusting relationships of people they can confide in that might not be us. Having said all of that, I can tell you, I have so many stories of families that have trusted us and told us things that show that it is completely possible. And that includes Aboriginal families. I sat with a young Aboriginal woman in Parks last week, whose experience of us as a child was horrendous. And at twenty-four now, she would say that people who have kept her alive and kept her child with her are our Aboriginal colleagues from the Parks Office. So I've certainly seen it work both ways, but we do need to rely on the sector.
Chair, may I ask one additional question? That just triggered a question I'd like to ask. The numbers of organisations, you mentioned five hundred and fifty, that the department funds around primary care. I was just interested if you were aware, if there, that there was a high service demand and that resources are stretched and there are waiting lists to access some services, or whether that provides a reasonable coverage of the, of the need that's required at that primary level?
I don't think there would be a department or secretary that would come before us, Commissioner, and not say that more resources are needed for some of the functions of their agency. And I don't mean to sound flippant, I think that there's, there is room for further investment. But in the absence of further investment, we have to make best use of the money we've got. And that also means working far more closely with services that are provided or funded by our colleagues in health, particularly primary healthcare services. So it's partly about making best use of the resources available in a community. But in some places, I think there's need for further investment, beyond doubt.
Right, I'll try and get over the deep shock I felt that you think we might need more resources. Thank you very much for giving your evidence and for attending today, Mr. Poots Trotter and Delfin Panda. May I assume, Ms. Bennett, that we now adjourn until nine thirty Brisbane time tomorrow, ten thirty Brisbane time?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you, then we'll adjourn.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.